Let folks in from the waiting room. Just give everyone a minute to come in from the waiting room. As a reminder, please mute yourself unless you are testifying before the board. Good afternoon. This is a hearing for the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, March 10th, 2021. Today's hearing is being conducted pursuant to certain temporary amendments to the open meeting law. That is what allows us to meet virtually. The hearing will be recorded at the city of Boston's website. Before I review some procedural matters, I will introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Kathleen Joyce. I'm Chair of the Boston Cannabis Board. And today I'm joined by my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner Darlene Lombos, Commissioner John Smith, and Commissioner Alejandro Sankeen.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'll review some procedural matters. As a reminder, please keep yourself muted unless you're presenting or have been called on to testify. I will read each item into their record. After that, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present. You will be timed. Our project manager Jasmine Nguyen will notify you at five minutes and at the eight-minute mark. After the presentation, you will be asked questions by the chairwoman and the commissioners. After that, we will take public testimony with elected officials and their representatives, and then moving on to the general public. If you have not already signed up to testify, please do so in the chat. However, wait until the item you wish to testify has been called. And please put your name, your address, and your affiliation, if any, into the chat. Your testimony will be limited to two minutes. The record will be kept open after today's hearing until Tuesday, March 16th at 5:00 PM. These matters will be voted on by the board on Wednesday, March 17th at 1:00 PM. That hearing is open to the public, and the public is encouraged to attend. However, no additional testimony will be accepted. To be clear, written testimony is given the same amount as weight as spoken testimony received today. We're actually going to begin today with item four on our agenda. Calling Pure Oasis LLC located at 430 Blue Hill Avenue, Dorchester. This is a recreational cannabis dispensary license. The current hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and the proposed hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Is the licensee present?
Yes, I am.
Please get your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Kobe Evans. I am the owner of, actually the co-owner of Pure Oasis at 430 Blue Hill Ave.
Great. Would you like to proceed with what you're proposing today?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for this time. So we are Pure Oasis. We are Boston's first adult-use recreational dispensary. We have been open for just about a year to the day. We are Boston's first adult-use recreational dispensary, as well as Massachusetts' first economic empowerment applicant to successfully open a retail business. And to that effect, we are the first dispensary open on the East Coast by a group primarily made up of people of color. To this date, we have had no issues, and we are looking to ensure that all customers across the city have equitable access to cannabis, whereas some of the newer applicants have been granted the permission to open from 10 to 10. We would like that same consideration.
Thank you. And for the record, there are no history of violations on the docket for this licensee. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Evans, on your one-year anniversary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your business in our city is historic, and it's nice to see that you've come around through the pandemic and you're able to celebrate one year. And now you're looking to extend your hours. Did you have a public meeting?
Yes, we did. We had a public meeting. We enjoy some degree of being well-known in the community, and to that effect, we have a positive impact. So we did our dissemination of the flyer. We held a meeting. No one showed up, but I don't want that to be an indication that there was, you know, any opposition. I think that before we opened, there was a lot of consternation in terms of what the impact would be. And I think that residents are happy with the outcome, whereas, again, we have had no issues, and I feel as though we've only been a benefit to the community.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions. Leslie?
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the licensee? Okay, no questions. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions?
No, just congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Lombos?
Hey, no questions. Congrats.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sankeen?
No questions. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Are there any individuals who wish to testify regarding this application, beginning with elected officials or their representatives?
I'm Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of my colleague. ONS held the community meeting on February 2nd, 2021, to discuss the amendment change with respect to extended hours of operation. The applicant has maintained outreach to local community groups, organizations, and other community stakeholders since opening their doors. Pure Oasis has been an excellent addition to this commercial area and has proven, had a good proven track record on-site operations. While we understand that there may be concerns from some residents in the larger area, we would like to go on record in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify regarding this application? Seeing none, this matter will be kept, the record will be kept open until Tuesday at 5:00 PM, and the board will take this matter under advisement. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Calling SAWF Estate LLC. The proposed license premise is 879 Blue Hill Avenue, Dorchester. This is an application for retail recreational cannabis dispensary license with hours of operation of 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This is an equity applicant. The date of the initial application was May 27th, 2020. The date of filing with the Inspection Services Department was July 14th, 2020. The date of the community meeting was November 30th, 2020. The presentation team consists of Shane Cranmore, Johnny Lee Rossi, and Ryan McMillan. Before we ask if the applicant is present, is Attorney Chalo White present to testify regarding the equity certification?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I was able to certify Shane Cranmore of SAWF Estate LLC as an equity applicant. Mr. Cranmore met the following criteria. Pardon me, let me back up. Mr. Cranmore is the 100% beneficial interest holder of SAWF Estates, and he met the following criteria. A person who has resided in an area of disproportionate impact, as defined by the CCC, for at least five of the past 10 years. Mr. Cranmore submitted copies of his residential leases from 2010 through 2017, establishing that he lived in Lowell for six of the past 10 years. The CCC has designated Lowell as one of the 29 communities of disproportionate impact. Mr. Cranmore has self-identified as black, which is another one of the criteria for the equity program. And finally, Mr. Cranmore met the criteria of a person whose household, whose annual household income is at or below 100% of the area median income. Mr. Cranmore submitted his 2019 federal income tax return, which reported a taxable income that puts him out below 100% of the area median income, as well as a statement from the Department of Revenue. Are there any questions about the equity certification?
Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney White. I know you testified that he qualified for the, as an equity applicant for the years he lived in Lowell. Where does he live now?
Mr. Cranmore provided a driver's license with a Milton address. So although he's not a Boston resident, he did meet the criteria of the Boston Equity Program.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions regarding the equity certification? Applicant present. Get your names for the record.
Jake Cranmore. How are you?
All right, just give me one moment to pull up your presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Hello, everybody.
Just give me one moment. For some reason, our internet.
Take your time. I have two backup computers, just in case.
All right, just one second.
Thank you for everyone being here. I know you all probably want to be outside right now. The weather, the good day that we have.
Apologies, I'm not usually here.
The Wi-Fi isn't the best in that space, Leslie.
Anyone who's been in City Hall knows it's a little bit of a struggle. Okay. All right, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
My apologies, you can, you can begin.
One second. Okay, so you tell me when to get going.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you all. And thanks to the board. My name's Shane Cranmore, and I'm the owner of Soft Estate LLC, also doing business at Greenberry. I'm a proud social equity member with the state and a newly approved Boston Equity Member. Next, please. This is a portrayal of what our building will look like when it's finished. It's not what it looks like now. As many of you know, but I'm eager to use this platform to create opportunities in a way life for people using the retail store. My family's owned the building since 1988 when I was a kid, and I'm very lucky to be in this unique position, as my father's given me 100% site control of the premises, and as well as the two parking lots. Next, please. I was born in Hyde Park, and I have a huge family all over Mattapan, Dorchester, Rockspur, 12 nieces and nephews, eight godkids. I was, I graduated from New Jersey Hartford in Connecticut and come from a long line of entrepreneurs. I owned a restaurant and lounge out in Lowell for five years, and I was able to obtain a full liquor license through the ABCC, which is the Alcoholic Beverages and Control Commission, and I never had one violation from the liquor board or from the city during my entire time there. And that's public information. Next, please. Yeah, so I'm having a full site control allows me the chance to hire and give priority to people here, and 100% of our staff will be from the city. That's 100% of the staff. And as you'll know, as you'll see, my first four major contracts were all given out to minority business enterprises and women business enterprises, and that trend will continue. I'm thrilled to introduce to you my employment and diversity consultant, Johnny Lee Rossi. She's an expert in the field, dedicating over 30 years of herself to diversity staffing. She's the owner of Backbake Staffing Group, and she received an award from Governor Duval Patrick for her securing diverse supply for the Commonwealth. Kevin King is our security advisor and owner of Boston Security Systems. He's also a minority owner of his own business. He's done some amazing surveillance work here at the building already, and so he's very familiar with the landscape. I already spoke with my dad, but again, I'm very thankful for him giving me the chance to be a role model here and also to be a provider for the people here. Mr. Grace, Stephen Grace, he's our community and youth diversion consultant. I'm so happy because I've known him for a few years, and he's been educated in the Boston Public School System for the last 11 years, and he comes from a great family of Boston Public School teachers of over 30 years at Madison Park in Hyde Park High. And I know he's a perfect fit for this job. I have to give many thanks to my policy and regulatory guru, Sarah Grant, and everyone over there at Smith Costello and Crawford. They make sure that we stay on the path and in between the lines always too, which is good. Next slide please. Oh, no, no, if I, sorry, Ward with Phoenix, very, very important. Our building and safety consultant. He's also a minority business owner in the city, and he'll work closely with my dad, Mr. Grace, and our security advisor, Mr. King, to ensure that all security and diversion measures are always in place. Next, please. Thank you. And just for the sake of time, I'm just gonna try to fly through these next four slides. They represent the over 100 emails and letters of support that we receive from public servants, butters, business owners, and people of the Commonwealth, which was left out, and I do apologize for that. But we're so, so appreciative of everyone in the support. Next, please. Michelle, she's like a second mother to me since I was a kid, and when I started this project, she was the first to give me her blessings and goodwill. She taught me the true meaning of being selfless and going above and beyond for people. And after just watching her 45 years of servants community, I was very happy to see the former mayor rename the Mattapan Food Pantry after her. Next, please. And with the next two slides, we can just kind of skip those, as they're the email list of the supporters from all areas of the Commonwealth. So without further ado, I'd just like to get you over to our employment and diversity consultant. I'm so glad to introduce her, Johnny Lee Rossi, and thank you all.
Hello, I'm very happy to be here with Mr. Cranmore to assist with the creation and implementation of Greenberry's DEI Plan. Greenberry has developed a comprehensive plan to promote equity among minorities, women, veterans, persons with disabilities, candidates who identify as LGBTQ, and immigrant populations. We commit to creating data and metrics to assure our numbers are met. To accomplish this goal, Greenberry will create gender-neutral job descriptions and recruit from a myriad of resources. In real terms, Greenberry commits 75% of its open jobs to local residents in Boston, and the majority of our service contracts will go to MBEs and WBEs. Next slide.
Five-minute warning.
Greenberry seeks to employ members of the local community and residents of Boston. Greenberry will leverage its relationships with community leaders and neighborhood groups to share its hiring needs. Greenberry will post jobs on various websites that target diversity candidates. Next slide. Greenberry's goal, the first year is to hire up to 25 employees. We will have a comprehensive employee handbook that will spell out Greenberry's benefits, policies, and procedures. Wages will begin at 16 per hour for retail and security personnel. Store managers will begin at up to $60,000 per year, and we will provide onsite training and education reimbursements. We will also have an open-door policy to include any whistleblower concerns, labor peace agreements, and any other issues concerning their safety and prosperity. Next slide. Background checks are mandatory. They will be used to assess the skill of the prospective candidate and the safety of the community. I would, next slide. Now I'd like to introduce Kevin King, founder and CEO of Boston Security Systems.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kevin King of Boston Security Systems. We've been protecting life and property throughout the city of Boston for over 30 years through fire, security, access control, and video surveillance. The prevention and security for Greenberry is of most importance. We will train personnel and written policies of all security procedures, also the threat of cyber attacks. The physical security will be responsible for greeting our customers before they enter the building. Once they enter the lobby, we'll identify them through official government IDs. They will also ensure that the perimeter is safe from loitering and also crowd control, while also be observing activities throughout the facility as the patrons are engaged in purchasing products. Our electronic security will consist of surveillance, access control, and also burglar alarms with holdup capabilities. And we'll also be handling, like I said, the cameras will be looking at sensitive areas and so much and so forth. And I'd like to turn the rest over to Shane if I could.
Thank you. And can we jump to page 16? I think he went through, we actually, we can actually, and we can go back there later if people want to see, but.
Two-minute warning.
Yes, okay, so we have plenty of access to public transportation. It's a five-minute walk to MBTA bus lines and community rails. We're going to have a transit incentive program that I'm excited about, with rewards for members, for gym memberships, and transit cards. We also have a private parking lot for up to 30 cars on our site, and we also have an employee parking lot for up to 18 cars. And it will only be able to be used once per day per employee, strict, strict regulations. But both lots are gated, and all these extra measures are done to minimize traffic and safety disruptions in the neighborhood. Next, please. We'll, yep, so we'll be using a licensed armored transport provider. All products or money will be dropped off in the rear of the building, and we'll be using our loading dock, which is to the east side of the building. And we'll be doing this to ensure that there's no disturbances to Blue Hill Ave or Angel Street, and with the site control, I'm able to pull this on. And the process of all that will be overseen by our multiple security members. Next, please. So at the top, you see the current, and at the bottom, you see the future. And this is why I'm so hopeful for this project and the role that the property can finally play here in the Dorchester community, Dorchester Center community. Next, please. And yeah, this is our floor plan, which has, as you can see, the retail, the retail store shaded in. We have customers that would enter in from our private parking lot, and where security personnel would escort them into the waiting area, where another security personnel would be waiting, and then when they're leaving, when customers would leave, they'd be escorted out from our security personnel through a different exit. But as you can see, there's, we have three different security rooms, and those are just security stations. Those are security rooms that they'll have, so we, and all the rooms will be equipped with, with everything needed to make sure that we're protecting our customers, our employees, and the neighborhood, and everyone. Next, please. Sorry.
That's time.
Okay, sorry. I'd like to take all questions. So, so sorry, guys.
You timed it perfectly. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, and thank you for your presentation. Just a couple of things. I appreciate the explanation about the off-street parking. Can you elaborate about this transit program and the incentives that you have built in for, is it for customers or is it for your employees?
So right now, we have it for employees, but we want to, we have a lot of programs that we want to create, and we're in the middle of creating a lot. Johnny Lee's helping me with a lot of great things. We talk all times of night going through this. It's not just a typical nine-to-five thing, and that's why I'm very passionate about it. And good to see that employees or my consultants are just as passionate. No, just for the, for the employees, we want to do gym memberships. We want them, we want to hire everyone that's within walking distance from our, from our building. That's what we want to do. But of course, we might be able to do all that, so we want people to be able to ride the buses, and that's why our employee parking lot's just going to be a one-time use. If you come in, you can't take your car, you got to go eat somewhere in that neighborhood. There's a lot of good places. I can give them advice where, like, they can only leave when they're going home. And that's going to be strictly regulated, you know, because I've been there for 30 years. I know what my, what the street had, the problems, the different problems that they used to be. And what we want to do is try to create some of the problems that I know I can, I can alleviate quickly and not add to any problems that are already there. But we will be working on something for customers. I just want that to be a little bit more in-depth, you know?
Thank you. You've put a lot of thought into that. And my other, my only other question has to do with validating IDs for individuals under 21. And maybe Stephen Grace can talk about, and I haven't seen this in other applications yet, his role as your community and youth diversion consultant. I'd like to hear a little bit more from, about that, maybe from him or from you, Shane, however you'd like to do it.
Yeah, and he'll, he'll be, I believe he'll be calling in. He's actually going for his master's right now, so. But I think he took the time to be able to call in today just to speak on that, but he'll do a wonderful job. His parents were 30-year schoolteachers at Madison Park in Hyde Park High, becomes a very well family. High school coach, he's been winning championships in the city, being a high, assistant high school coach on the team. And so he's really good with kids, you know, growing up and being in the atmosphere, just like myself. We're really good with kids. I have a lot of role, a lot of kids that look at me as a role model. So that's a big, that's a big thing for us. That's a no-no. You know, I don't, there's not one kid. I have 12 nieces and nephews, and the older of them are getting to be a little, well, we got some 21, 22, but 17, 16, 15. And I know the, the, as with every parent, you know, I know what they can get into, and you know, and so that's something where, just like in Lowell, I was never a nuisance. I never allowed an underage drink, and that's a problem in liquor. A lot of places that are running good establishments still have liquor violations, you know, because some of them sneaking. But that was nothing, that was something I prided myself on, leaving there with no violations, and we really do it by the book, and my, my image, like, I have an image, and I like to keep it, keep it high, and so I don't like doing things that can take away and have people think that we're not doing our job here, you know, and that's why we want to be transparent, and we want to do the right thing always.
Okay, I think it sounds like a very interesting position and a member of your team. I see Stephen Grace on. I don't know if Stephen wants to tell us a little bit about your role as the community and youth diversion consultant?
So I was gonna, you know, call in, so to speak, but I can answer it this way as well. But again, thank you for this opportunity. I think it's really important for you to hear from folks like myself that work in the community. And, you know, I've worked in, you know, with the youth in Boston for 11 years, like Shane mentioned, through coaching and through education. And so when Shane approached me with this opportunity, it was for three reasons. My experience working with youth in the community, my commitment to working with students in education and through coaching, and my reputation and honesty. But Shane had witnessed that, knowing me for a number of years and seeing my career track, and he's been involved in some of the things that I've done throughout the years. And so specifically, like, you know, with basketball, like you mentioned, I have some of my former players that now look up to him, and he's supporting, you know, throughout their lives, that they've graduated from college, et cetera, just by being around and committing to causes for the youth. So because of that, he asked me to get involved with Soft and Greenberry, and as the community and youth diversion consultant, I plan to take this serious, and one of the things I communicated to Shane was that my priority is not the success of this business. My priority is not the cannabis industry. My priority is the prevention of diversion to youth, but specifically what proactive measures you are taking to support the community and prevent the youth from looking at cannabis as an opportunity for them and understanding all of the consequences. And so that's what I'm going to take serious. Anytime I've seen any program successful, it's been, been able to identify problems at the ground level and put forth preventative measures and support the community in that way. And so what I'm looking forward to doing is, what Shane has tasked me with, is applying that corporate responsibility to something that actually works in the community, developing programs, and, and whether that means just general support grassroots or financial plans to support youth education and community involvement. So that's really what I'm going to be doing for him. So consulting and making sure that he maintains that level of responsibility.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Grayson. And one last thing, as far as the validating IDs for those under 21, Shane, I would just ask that if you need a backup ID, that you ask for a picture ID, not a gym card or a T-Pass with something with someone's name on it.
Yeah.
We want to take those identification forms and safeguards seriously.
Seriously, yeah, we will, we'll 100% do that.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Good afternoon, gentlemen. First one is for Boston. Can you tell me some of the other places that you have provided security protection for? So I guess that's the Kevin.
Kevin, you are muted.
You're muted, Kev. Yes, how are you? Yes, and we've, Roxbury Youth Works was one of our clients at one point that was actually in the building. We provided surveillance as well as burglar alarm systems, and also metal detection, because it was a, it was a youth group and for kids that were slightly in trouble with the system, and so required a little bit of special security. Throughout the years, we provide burglary systems for mom-and-pop stores throughout the, throughout Boston. In terms of, we do fire protection for a large number of the apartment buildings throughout Boston. Access control, which we've been doing for, actually, as long as we've been in business, with card access, key locks, and things of that nature. So as opposed to for Greenberry, there's going to be several rooms that were, that are considered sensitive areas. So we will be providing particular electronic locks with code access, which will be changed on a regular basis. When, I mean, if people were to be cycled through, we'd be changing those codes on a regular. But, but yeah, it's, it's been a long road for us. We've been in business for quite a long time, and we've been doing pretty good.
Okay, one more question for you. How will you be? Okay, one more question for you. How will you be training your security staff? What types of uh training will you be providing and who will be providing that?
Um I think um uh Shane, is it um is it Mr. Grace that's gonna be handling um that the train for that?
Yeah, so as far as with the with the youth, with Mr. Grace is gonna make sure that 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 nothing is getting in the hands of.
No, 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 I don't mean that. Who is going to be providing training for your security staff? Who will be working your front door? Be working your floor?
Yeah, so me me and Mr. King, um it's something that's, you know, from former owner of a of a lounge security. I've had uh six, seven members at at different times. It's a totally different uh um outfitting, but um security's always been something that's important to me. Um I'm taking training right now with the at the with the social equity classes. And uh they're teaching us some great things. I mean, I I I'm so grateful for the social equity program. I'm actually happy to be in the Boston Equity Program. It just excites me to be a part of both now. Um but they they're teaching me great things. Uh right now, we're learning facility, the facility um angles and different things like that. So I'm learning on the fly, but I'm learning a lot. I'm actually, you know, I went to school, so I'm able to pick things up a little bit quicker, but. Working with Mr. King, um he was in our building. He did Roxbury Youth Works back in two thousand, maybe nineteen ninety-seven or something like that. And so um he's very familiar with the system in 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 the area, so we're training the people. That's something that that's very important. We we plan on having between two to four. Um every one of our. Security people will have its own room, that you know, we have their own their own room that they'll be able to. Stations, security stations, and so we have a a pretty good plan, but we we wanna make sure that we keep working on the plan. So they're all trained well, you know, I I can't say that I tell you that we've trained them yet because uh we we have to. We have to hire them, but we want, we're gonna take all advice from from everyone um and and try to do the best that we can, um cuz it's very important.
It is, and also we're probably um be hiring um an outside security company to handle um. The um the personal security.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, and 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 the reason why I would just more or less hold enough on that, I wanna try to see. You know, how I could do more jobs, so if it if if there's good security people that we can hire. One by one internally and they're from the area and they're people of color um and or the LBGQ community and if it's right, that's what I would wanna do. If I could find it, I have companies that we could and they could just do it all, but then that kinda takes the hands out of me being the the person to to change this person's life. Not to say that's what I wanna do. This is, this is the platform I've been given. Um I'm so lucky. I think I've been put here for for. A specific reason and um it's not only for myself, but for the people in this community. I've seen what's been going on here. I I actually, when I went to school. The community is actually what paid for me to go to college, you know, because the the rent that was coming in from the tenants in our building. Was the only way I went. I didn't, I didn't get a scholarship, you know, I wish I did. I wish I had dove more into the books, but. But um you know, and so when I was out there, I knew what was paving my way, you know, and when I was out there spreading my wings. I knew it was the people back here that was actually paving my way and that's something my father always made sure we know, he, I knew. Especially every time it was, he had to write the check. Um and so it means a lot to me, you know, and that's why we wanna do everything for the. For our area, Angel Street residents, Little Lab residents, you know, and always on the outside, like. Michelle Ford runs a matter pan food pantry, you know, I I I I'm sticking to my territory, but in my mind, I keep thinking about. All, you know, the Roxbury Food Pantry, all these other things and I just think that we will start inward and get out, but I, you know. I I I'm not the one that ever wanna overshoot myself, but I just wanna do do better, you know, and do more. And uh this won't be the last time I'll be in front of you as we 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 wanna do phase two things, so I would like you guys to hold me accountable to everything I'm saying now. Um because I really mean it, you know, and I'm excited. I'm excited to be able to to hire people and change their lives and get to know their families and. And and that's what I did in Lowell.
Sounds good. My last question is going to probably be for you Shane. That is a tough, tough intersection. It's tough on a good day with that building not being fully occupied. Have you considered a traffic study because you got a bus stop, you've got coming in from Talbot merging onto Blue, you got Angel. You've got Franklin Hill. That is a crazy corner.
Yeah, yeah, and I and I've and I've 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 lived it there, you know, and so you're, what you're saying is correct. And what we wanna do is, I think having the site control can help me to alleviate some of these problems. Um and that's why I'm really grateful for my dad. I wanna keep hopping on it, but I was really happy when he said, I mean, this building was, it's his baby. And to to give me the control showed a lot of trust in me, but it also showed that, you know, I know he doesn't wanna have nuisances with the neighbors that he's known for thirty years. So it's up to me to make sure I'm doing the right thing. Uh what we wanna stagger people in, stagger people out, and that's why we have a lot of space. Um and we can set up, uh we have the plan set up a certain way now, but those plans can change because we have so much room. Uh with the two parking lots, we can have.
Where are those two parking lots located?
Uh right, right off the building and then the employee lot is is the next lot over, but.
So are you staying in front of the building? That's one parking lot?
No, uh well, that is one, yes, but we're not counting that one. Um we have two more on the on the Angel Street side.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and it's private parking lots and one is just gonna be for employees where they could come in one, one time a day and 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 out. And during snow emergencies, you know, something that we is a big issue uh on the street and I in. Um I I know what they go through, you know, I really do, you know, I will be in the building and we'll see people. Shoveling, we'll see, I mean, it's it's on that street is very hard and so what we wanted to do is that second parking lot. Uh we wanted to make it for decals where we put, we pay, we provide the decals every year, whether we're changing every. Three months, six months, nine months to people on the Angel Street that when there's a snow emergency, they can, instead of having to go walk miles. Find a place to park or have someone pick them up, move their car and drive them back, they can pull right into that lot. You know, usually if there's a snow emergency, I believe we won't be open the next day, you know, and so. They'll be ready, there's eighteen more cars, that that that's a lot on that street, you know. And and um we just wanna make sure that uh we, the next day we can get people to move, but that will be a problem that I'll be dealing with. Um into and de- dealing with people, so it's not like, oh, the minute you didn't move your car, towed, nah, we're we're gonna figure it out, but we want people to work with us too. To know that it's actually for one thing, but hey, anytime there's this emergency, you guys have access for it and we'll provide the decal. We don't want other cars and other streets, not that we don't care about the problems on the other streets, we really do, but uh. Wait, you know, I wanna do above and beyond for eighty, if that makes any sense, um just because they are my closest abudders in um. You know, the I a lot of them are are probably gonna call in and support, but I want everyone in that street to know. Well, that brother, he actually does care and it may not happen in the first month, it may not happen in the second, but I guarantee you that. Over time, they're gonna see that I'm always gonna take the approach even even if it means reducing income or whatever it has to be done to. Make sure we're not a nuisance. My dad's been there for thirty years. I wanna be there for thirty years, you know, and and I don't have any kids, but. I want my kids to be there for thirty years when I do have, you know.
Well, I would just suggest that you take advantage of the help that you're getting from both the CC and the city. And maybe invest in a traffic study because that's probably going to be your biggest roadblock on that area right there.
Yeah, yeah, and we have a a big waiting room where we can, we can stagger people in, we can stagger people out. Um so, but I do hear you're saying that's something that we definitely take into account. Um like I said, being there for thirty years, we we see, we see it, but we've been managing it. It's it's been manageable and I know that with the more pot shops opening up. We don't see, we don't, you know, think that we're gonna get the rest that I think we saw in other stores in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Um I think it's gonna be more tailored to um repeat customers coming at their time. But that's things that we're gonna always track and if it becomes a problem, we have to fix it. You know, like I said, I I want to come back in front of you guys, you you all, I'm sorry. Um for for phase two and all the different things we wanna do, we want the building to be a, just just for the outside of the building, you know, it's been a little bit of an eyesore. And I can't wait, I've been waiting twenty years to try to do something, you know, it's hard where uh when there's tenants and tenants coming in and out. It's where it's a unprecedented, unprecedented times right now, but um I feel like we could really do something positive here and when. Those millions of cars are driving down the Ave, they can look and they can see, wow, look at, look at that, you know, and that will help bring more people. And into the area. When I talk to Sun Pizza, when I talk to Happy's Market, they're all for it because they know more people are coming here. You know, and not more more people from outside the area, you know, and 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 if you know anything about, I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, no, no, Shane, just to, just to piggyback on what uh Commissioner Holmes was talking about, we can connect you with our um. Our Office of Economic Development and they can talk to you about what it would take to get a traffic study that wouldn't pause your application at all. But we just wanna offer you that resource.
Okay, please, I and I wanna take it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holmes, did you have any other questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, sir. So in your plan, your your diversity hiring, you said your plan is to commit fifty percent of your job openings to diverse candidates. So that's question one, if you could break that down a little bit. And then also you said that uh. It includes developing skill sets in retail farming and administrative and leadership roles. You have a farming component to this? And is it in this building or?
Uh so, so yeah, it's a two first, um. We we don't have, no, we we're go, we wanna go for a tier one grow, but that's at a later stage. Once we we get up and running with this, we have everything set. Um I've been, like I said, I've been lucky enough to try to to have this opportunity and and what I wanna do is. I'm, I know I'm good at running different things. I'm good at hiring the right people to help. I don't just hire a friend or a brother just because. I hire the people that I know can help me get the job done. Um I've been in business. I know how tough it is to stay in business and so. Um a couple of years, a year, you two years down the line, that's where we we we'd like to get to, um not that that we wanna delay.
Is that like a second phase, what you're talking about in your?
Two, exactly, it's a phase two.
Will involve farming.
Yeah, so right now we wouldn't, we would, we wouldn't do that. We wanna kind of perfect what we're doing right now in front of you. And um I think in phase two, we'll have a lot more information about that stuff and and uh we wanna build some uh some good.
Can you give me, so you're saying fifteen, maybe fifteen employees in round one, phase one?
Fifteen to twenty-five, we're saying.
So you're fifty percent, can you break that down? Are you thinking about what percentage of that is formerly sort of incarcerated? Based on a war on drugs, what is, you know, have any sort of breakdown that you can give us?
Yeah, so I I I think um Joni can help us with that as well, but I, one one thing I'd like to say is, um we we know that about seventy-five, eighty percent of our people will be. Um from uh minority uh backgrounds. Um. The the war on drugs is something that's very important, you know, with my social equity status. Um part of my fellow social equity people have have gotten this status because of what's happened to them. And so anything that I can do for for someone like that, I've I've also been in the entertainment um game for for a long time before this, so. Um people coming and people incarcerated, that's not something that that necessarily scares me. Some of the. The best people I know have been incarcerated and came out for different reasons and so that's something we we wanna hire a lot of different types of people. Uh we won't exclude any type of person, um but but we wanna make sure that we we are hiring and I know Joni, I should let some the expert talk a little. Uh because she'll be giving me a lot of advice on on how we should do this the right way and that's what I like. I mean, I I always have opinions on a lot, but I like to listen to people. Especially the experts, cuz I can't be an expert. I'm not an expert in almost anything, right, but but um. She's really good at what she does, so I would like to concede to her and listening to her, uh but I know the final decision would be made by me.
Hi, Commissioner Smith. So in our original application, we sort of broke down, you know, sort of percentage wise, how. And who we want to hire and we're gonna have applications that we're gonna monitor through metrics. We're gonna have a database that's going to be um very specific, you know, in terms of the folks that we do end up hiring. But it's also gonna be, you know, based on percentages.
What are those metrics you're looking at?
Well, we're gonna be looking at incarcerated, uh you know, we're gonna look at people, we're gonna see, you know, lots of folks that have been incarcerated. Have learned a skill, you know, do they have a skill? What kind of skills do they have? Um so that will be one metric, you know, are we hiring and then persons with disabilities. You know, what kind, we're gonna look at our job descriptions first and foremost, as we mentioned earlier, they're gonna be gender neutral. And we're going to try to see, you know, what kinds of folks with disabilities might have been incarcerated. You know, what kinds of jobs they might, you know, be perfect for. We have people, I have people working that have disabilities that are in leadership roles. For instance, so we're going to try to keep to a certain percentage of people per job, if you will. You know, as we said, you know, uh sort of on a global basis, it was at least seventy-five percent of the locals that live in the community. We'd like to have, you know, work and then we get referrals and referral bonuses. But then also, I'm, we are going to advertise um on job sites. That will also be inclusive. There's places like the Rainbow Times and Simply Hired that, you know, people look at that are from. Uh different backgrounds, if you will, you know, and they feel comfortable applying to jobs when those jobs are posted on those sites. So um I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. And and nonviolent drug offenders too, uh Mr. Smith, that that's something that's very important to me. Making sure that we are hiring non nonviolent drug offenders. That's something very, very important for me.
You just cut out, we didn't get that.
Oh, sorry. Also in your plan, you talked about having a paid internship program?
Yep.
What do, what are you paying them and talk about the na- nature of the internship a little bit?
Well, we're developing that now and I think, you know, what we'd like to do is start them out at the base rate of sixteen an hour. And you know, first, you know, we wanna identify, I think paid internships are gonna be commonly used in in this industry. So that you can identify, you know, whether or not the people, you know, have skill sets. Now for retail associates. Well, maybe take two weeks to identify, you know, whether or not this person might be a good sales associate. And then it's a good role for them. So we we are going to be looking at, you know, we we don't know about college programs yet. You know, I do a lot of, inside my own office, I do a lot of paid internships from the schools. We're gonna look at this, you know, sort of on an individual basis to see, you know, what colleges are comfortable sending their candidates, et cetera, you know, for these kinds of internships. But whatever internships we do, they will be paid.
And Johnson and Wills just did a new program that was great that we wanna try to work with, um but I know they're in Rhode Island.
Cannabis entrepreneurship, yep. Yeah, they're starting that fall two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, if I wanna move from like a retail associate to like a manager position. You know, if I get in, I wanna move retail associate and the managers, any sort of training for that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, you know what? Yes, what we wanna do is um get it going, get it up and running, I get, you know, get our job descriptions written. You know, know uh what types of uh roles we're gonna have internally from the get-go. Is there gonna be one manager, you know, per shift? Is there gonna be two managers per shift? And those two, you know, uh could very well end up being paid internships. Shane, do you have a comment about that or, you know, we're sort of working on these kinds of ideas now?
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna build from within, so um any intern coming in is gonna have the opportunity to to become a manager, you know, um. All all I'm ever been about is just kind of uh growing. I I I don't want anyone to. To come with me and stay with me for the next thirty years. I wanna set them up to do what their major thing is to do. And um how we can do that and if if it's with staying with us for thirty years or ten years or fifteen years, then that's what we want and we're gonna try to grow with them. And and help lead them and teach them, not just have them be here and continually to do the same things every day, but continually teach. Like uh as being a doctor or a nurse where you just go take more exams to be able to do more things. And then um so uh to me, I kinda see that's the same, that's the same thing. I think um our employees are very important to us. They're 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 the, they're the whole thing. They they are, they will be greenberry, you know, and so the more that we can have them educated. And and thinking that they can educate in in their lives and better their lives, that's gonna be the more um. Passion they bring to the job, you know, and so that's what we wanna create, you know, um uh an atmosphere that everyone wants to come, everyone knows that the. The job cares about them and the people up above care about them, not only on what they're bringing in per per day of dollar, but what their futures are, what. If they have kids, you know, if they have family that's relying upon them, you know, how do we help them, you know, more like a family atmosphere and I know. That's an easily said thing, um but I know uh people that know my last place, it was it's a family atmosphere, you know. It's not about just coming to work and clocking out and so what do you need, you know, um type of thing, but that that's a very good question. And uh we're gonna make sure we pay a lot of attention to that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lombos, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, thank you. Good afternoon. I just had um a few questions. I really appreciate it. Sounds like you have really deep. Sounds like you have really deep roots in the community. It says that in our board member that you're going to attend community group meetings. Could you just give me an idea of what, who are these community groups you have in mind to meet with?
So there's a, there's a bunch of civic groups in our areas. And so we've had, we've had the hearing, we had the one community hearing, and and some of them came out, asked questions. Wasn't able to answer everyone's questions, but we tried to do our best. But it was very positive, positive hearing. And yeah, I mean, we're going to be in the community. I want to be involved with the closest community groups next to me, but not only the closest, but maybe some outside of the box. Not to just keep Harvard on the show, but I'd like to lean on her as far as giving me advice. You know, she's not a consultant, but she's a mentor of mine, a lifelong mentor of just, you know, maybe how much. What I don't want to do is, you know, say, okay, I'm going to sign up for every single one, you know? If I could, and you guys wouldn't look at me like I was crazy, I would do it. But I want to make sure that I want to start close to the to the groups next to me, the Blue Hill Circle Group, the Triangle, the Harvard Triangle Group, all the places that are close to us. I'd love to get into a great relationship with them, and if they would allow me into their group, I would love to, I would love to be to be part of it.
Yeah, Ms. Shirley is obviously someone who knows everybody, so you can't actually go to everything she probably suggests. So totally agree with that.
I know.
I do, I had a question too. There was some mention in your presentation about free trainings and doesn't describe them. So would love to hear what that is. And then also, I've never heard of Donut Saturdays, so maybe you could share a little bit about what that is.
Joni, we'd like to talk about the famous Donut Saturdays.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Well, Donut Saturdays is my idea. And I do a lot of things in my own office around food. And I like to invite people to come in a relaxed atmosphere and talk about any concerns or innovative ideas that they might have. And what Shane and I are talking about right now is that's, that's one, that's one part of it. You know, could we sort of develop even at maybe one of the local churches or, you know, find a nice space somewhere, you know, near the store that we can invite community members in to just talk, maybe talk about some job openings we have, and make sure that the community feels included, you know, in what we're doing. And also, you know, we're also looking at, you know, involving some of our neighbors, you know, who are in business. And maybe talking about like a points program or a local loyalty program where if they shop at another store and they come here to shop, maybe we'll give them some sort of a discount. Or, you know, we're trying to develop some, some programs, some actual programs that we can do, you know, on a more regular basis to involve the community. And and we do have, I have a number of community groups that we are thinking about to, you know, engage with. And of course, from a hiring perspective, that would be like the career centers, you know? I've been involved in some other charities as well. But, you know, the free internship would be so that people could come in and not feel like they had to pay for training. And as a matter of fact, we go from being a free internship to actually paying the person to come in to try out the job. Because, you know, it's a new industry. So we haven't established how long yet, you know, this internships might take, but we will get there.
Great. I appreciate that. I think it would be great if in the next few, you know, just until next week, be great if there are some of those things, plans solidified, to just get an update on some of that. That would be really helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner St. Gien, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for the time you're taking to to answer all of our, of our questions. I had a question, it kind of piggybacks on Commissioner Smith's question. Can you just clarify a little bit the phase one and phase two? Because it's quite an expansion. And when it's, when you say twenty to thirty employees in phase two, I'm assuming that's twenty to thirty in addition to phase one? And is that, are you seeing that based on how you build out the the space? Like what's going to happen between phase one and phase two that there's, that you'll need, you'll need all of the, you'll need more employees? Is the, yeah, can you just like kind of explain that a little bit? I was looking through it, trying to figure out if it was explained. But I think it'd be better if you you do it.
Jump in there before, before the applicant does. There, there were, there was information in the application about a future, coming back for future different license types. So when they're talking about phase two, they would be going actually back to the community for a new discussion on license types such as cultivation and then returning to this board. So just for today's purposes, obviously, phase two would be a completely separate process.
Okay, that's, so that's one thing. Thank you, Leslie. I knew it was probably in there and that I missed it. But in turn, it's just then a quick question, you don't have to get into it in great detail since you'll have to come back. But is that, is that onsite phase two or are you looking at an offsite phase two?
Shane, you're muted.
How could they mute me? I didn't mute myself. That's a great question. I've had the opportunity to, to, to go to different towns and and try to start, start stuff there. But I really don't want to, you know, I really would like to do it here. You know, I know that it's a big undertaking, but I know that I'm, I'm the type of person that can do it. I have a lot of respect for this city and the people in Dorchester. And so I think we can pull it off. I just know that it's not an easy task, and that's why we wanted to separate it and just be really good at this first. So when we did come back in front of you, you'd see that, okay, hopefully, you could see that we mean business when we say stuff and that we know that you're going to hold us accountable for everything we say. And that's the way it should be. But it definitely two phases. The, with the phase two, you're going to think about the delivery, where every one of my trucks will have two drivers. And so there'd be a lot of need. And I'm excited for that because there's a chance there to create a lot of job opportunities. You know, if you have five, six trucks out there, that's twelve jobs right there. And that's good, that's good for twelve families, you know? And that would make me happy every day, knowing that I'm employing twelve people to, to, to drive around and do their thing and, and do it safely. And so I can't wait to get to phase two, but I just have to, sometimes I just have to control myself. Phase one, and that's what I'm trying to do. My firm, Smith's Costum Crawford, it's really good at keeping me in line, like I said earlier, to, to know what we can pull off and let's fight what we can choose right now. The building, like my father, it's a thirty thousand square foot building. And for a long time, I've had a lot of dreams of wanting to do something powerful there for, for the area to beautify, get more people from Boston coming down. And and these are things that, that I know that that can happen. And so I want to get to phase two. We're going to start with phase one, and we're going to do well at this, and then we're going to, we're going to work on that. But there'll be a lot of jobs, twenty-five to forty, when you count the manufacturing, the tier one grow, a small grow we want to do. But the delivery, that's a big thing, the delivery. Because for every truck you go out, you have to have two drivers, you have to have someone stationed at the base. And I, I really, that, that, that intrigues me a lot too, the delivery aspect. I know that we could get a lot of people that could do the job, as long as they're responsible. We could have convicted, past convicted people that can do that job and, and, and do it well, and do it well, and make a living, you know, have insurance, have health benefits. And that's important because that helps the family that they have, you know? There's a lot of single mothers and single fathers, and it's tough, you know? And I've had an up and down life where I've had great, and then I've had really low, you know? And so I've been on both sides of the coin, so I can relate to everyone. And, and that's why I know that no matter where I get to, I'm all, you're always going to see me pulling people up with. That's just, I know no other way, you know?
Thank you. That, that helps clarify. And so just sort of related to that a little bit, you, in the application, talked a little, in the memo about the financing. And there was a estimate of about six hundred thousand dollars. Is that what you're estimating is your, your financial need for, to build out the space for this phase one?
Yes, so there's been so much work, internal work done in that, that building. And that can't be seen from the outside. So I was lucky enough that we were able to choose right now. If they told us tomorrow we'd have to change up the plans, we could, because we have so much space. It would be different if I could only have the lease for this one space. And then if they said no, then I didn't know what I would do. So we feel that we can, we can move things around and make it work best for the community, for the city, and for ourselves to be successful, right? And so, so I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, just that that's, I mean, it is, like you said, a huge space. And obviously, and you talked more about the phase one and phase two, and I know you're coming back, and that might include new financing. It's just, just wondering what that was entailing and that is to build out the space and, you know, sort of start up the startup costs. We're just trying to figure out, like, we're, we're new at this. So the financing stuff is where, where we really try to, to dig in and figure out. You know, because there are differences in how much one cost and another cost. So it's just interesting to me to kind of hear like, okay, yeah, we came to this point of six hundred thousand because that's going to entail, you know, building on the space and, you know, hiring, acquisition, you know, just, just out of curiosity of what that, what that entails.
The inside's already been done years ago for an older project that was being done. So all the bathroom pipes and stuff is already done. We have bathrooms, separate bathroom for our employees, and then bathrooms for our, for our customers that have to go right through the security, a security section in order to get to the bathrooms. So we want everything covered. But yeah, I mean, we do know that with all the work that's already been done and with the, the deferment and rent that I've been allowed, secretly allowed, I'm able to get to pull this off, you know? And I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to pull it off if I wasn't getting assistance and experience. And that's why I don't want to waste this opportunity with people that are investing and risking themselves with me, you know? And I want to try to do the right things to make sure that we can have this opportunity.
And then the, the last thing, and you don't have to answer it now, but I just, again, piggyback on Commissioner Smith's questions about hiring people, Corey, you just, if you could just kind of elaborate now right now. But in, you know, think about the types of partnerships you might want to engage in, what some kind of real goals are around percentages. I think that would be, that would be helpful. I think your, your commitment is clearly there. It would just, if you don't have it written down, it's hard to get to that, to get to that, that space in place. So I would just, that's just one recommendation for, for next week to think about. There are a lot of different partnerships with the city, with CBOs that, that could help you, could that be helpful?
Thank you. And we'll get that to, to you shortly soon. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. Those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
We are now going to move to public testimony. As a reminder, please limit your testimony to two minutes. You can also submit written testimony. The record will be kept open until Tuesday, the sixteenth at five P M. Are there any elected officials or representatives of elected officials who wish to testify?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of my colleague. O N S held a community meeting on November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. The application has the support of residents in the area, and the application has continued to conduct outreach to the community area stakeholders. The board is in recent of at least a dozen letters of support for this application submitted by budding residents. We'd like to on record in support of this application. We ask the applicant to continue to engage in the community as they move forward in the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals representing elected officials who wish to testify?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Colleen Lewis, on behalf of Council Andrea Campbell. I'd like to go on record and on opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now move to individuals who signed up online. Please be prepared to unmute yourself when I call your name. Please, once I call your name, please state your address for the record. Calling Cody Green-Moran. Is Cody present? Calling Phoenix Wadsworth.
Good afternoon. My name is Wadsworth Phoenix. And as Shane told you previously, I will be involved with the business and helping them to make sure the safety of the building is intact at all time and that anything that would have to do with consulting regarding community or anything like that relative to the business I'll be involved in. I have known Shane for many, many years. As he stated before, he's been around that building. I've been around the building, watched him grow up, and shown so much responsibility in all the things he's done. And I really, really, I'm looking forward to seeing him get moving with this and wish him all this success in this as well.
Thank you. Calling Kevin Shouter. Is Kevin present? Calling Stephen Grace.
Sorry, I am here. I spoke earlier. And, you know, just wanted to obviously give my support. My address is three hundred Front Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island. I actually live in between Boston and Providence because I service both communities. So geographically, it makes sense. But although I work in Boston and have worked in Boston for the good part of eleven years, I think some of the things that the board members asked were excellent questions. And again, you know, my role, you know, with Soft and Greenberry is primarily going to be the prevention of diversion to youth and knowing those statistics and knowing the increase, you know, of the use of marijuana, you know, with young adults is going to be one of the things that we are going to focus on, like, you know, with the employees. So in terms of training and just knowing those statistics. And I think somebody else on the board mentioned it, knowing statistics and writing them down to be able to have an active plan, to be able to implement it is going to be very important. So that's going to be part of the onboarding process as well. And I look forward to being part of that process as I've done for, you know, many years.
Just out of interest of time, since you already had a chance to testify and answer my questions, I just wanted to make sure we have enough time for everybody else.
Thank you. Calling Morna McCormick. Calling Selena Seika.
I'm here. Hi, could everybody hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Selena Seika, eight eighty-five Weston Street in Brockton, Mass. Good afternoon, everybody. I have lived in Boston for over thirty-five years with my daughters. And about a year ago, we moved to Brockton. Let me start giving a little background with the Cranmore family. I'm calling to give my hundred percent support to Shane and his family and his business. As a single mother back in nineteen ninety-five with no car, living in the South End, I did not know how I was going to make it from week to week or find steady work. That was until I was hired from the family at the new salon they had just opened five minutes away from my house. That day changed my life and my daughter's life. I would never forget what the Cranmore family have done for us. Diversity means something very special to them. Mr. Cranmore, Shane's dad, hired me, an Asian American woman, to manage and run his new salon, filled with black stylists, Hispanic stylists, Caribbean stylists, and Vietnamese male technician, all under one roof in a prestigious location at the South End. And it was great. Some of my dearest friends to this day came from the salon. Many stylists left to start and open up their own salon and shops. The family has always been very supportive, no matter what we did. My daughter and Shane are the exact same age. I remember Shane would always be there, helping his father with so many different things. Shane is such a fine and a trustworthy young man. I know he will be one of the best cannabis owner in that neighborhood. And now I'm working for an insurance company for over twenty.
Okay, that's, that's your two minutes. We appreciate your testimony, and you can also provide written testimony. Calling Jim Jones. Is Jim Jones present? Calling Kevin Campbell.
Yes, how are we doing there?
Hi, please state your address for the record.
Yes, I'm Kevin Campbell. I am at twenty-seven Cameron Street in Dorchester. I am, I'm very familiar with this building. I am also aware of the family. I'm also a security professional. I've been on my own security firm for over ten years, Venom Security. I think this is a good business. It brings tax revenue to the community. It brings employment to the community. And I believe by allowing the legal dispensary there, it'll control the quality of the, and minimize the illegal sales of dangerous and laced brands. I would say let's allow this company to operate of the economic advancement in the industry and to definitely, you know, just influence down the and to definitely, um, you know, just initially dominated by illegals and non-minority owners, and I'm in support of the, um, Greenberry's, uh, SWF estate. And, um, you know, I definitely will be, uh, offering my security professionalism to them, um, in helping to keep it safe.
Thank you very much. Calling Isaiah Phoenix.
Hi, um, I lived in the Roxbury, Dorchester area for a good majority of my life, and I think that this business and this location would be great for the area economically. Um, to provide prosperity to the businesses around it, like they said, and I think Shane's the right person to do it. As a man growing up in the area or has, you know, lived in the area and has experience in the community, uh, he's the right man to do it with the, with the vision. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Moss. Calling Andrew Pereira.
Yes, hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. You state your.
Okay, great. Yes, I've known the family for a few years. Um, yes, I've, I've been in contact with Bill Cranmore here and there, and, um, I do, I, I am a hundred percent in support of this business being brought up into the community, because, um, I believe, like the previous gentleman had said, um, we have so much dangerous drugs out there, especially marijuana with being laced with fentanyl and stuff like that. And, um, a lot of people have died from overdoses, so this would give a great opportunity to, to the community to have a safe, safe option for marijuana use and, um, also to help increase, um, job security. Whereas, um, your community, the community would be able to get a job, you know, be comfortable with their job, and from the business plan, from what I heard, it sounds very, a very great opportunity for the community. Um, as far as me listening to, for the, um, for, for the trafficking and stuff like that, um, I believe that it'll be very well controlled. I do know the bit, the area quite well, and that, um, if they've have some type of me- measurement of traffic, whereas if it's busy or not, they'd be able to control and probably be able to set up a square, square app, whereas they could just probably control their, um, appointments to control traffic. So I don't think the traffic's going to be an issue, so hon- honestly, I'm a hundred percent supportive of this.
Thank you very much. Calling Josh Gates.
How you doing? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please state your address for the record.
Um, Josh Gates, two thirty Calendar Street in Dorchester. Um, I'm literally a five-minute walk from the location in question, and I've, I've lived here the majority of my life. Um, I've known Shane for a, a good number of years now, and to be honest, he's, a- as you can see, he's very passionate about the work he's done. I've been a patron of some of his businesses before. Um, he runs a very clean and tight ship, which is hard to do in that industry sometimes, but he managed to do it for years. Um, as someone who's grown up in Dorchester, um, it's extremely encouraging to see Dorchester take advantage of these opportunities, especially with someone like Mr. Cranmore. Um, I've been here and I've seen Dorchester, you know, give some opportunities to some less than worthy business owners, and that's not the case here. Um, I'm very excited for this place to kind of, you know, get a, a, a little bit of a facelift. Um, as I said, I've lived in this area, and that's just going to help everything, you know, they have, you have the, the, a few community centers in the area, a lot of restaurants, and I, I'm in full support. And I think you can see Shane's passion and his dedication and how it's going to really take off and, and really benefit Dorchester and the surrounding community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me just look in the chat. Uh, Cody Green-Moran. Is Cody present?
I'm present. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your address for the record.
Sure. I'm a previous Boston resident. I currently live at nine oh three Providence Place in Providence, Rhode Island. I just recently lo- relocated. Uh, I previously worked for the Commonwealth, um, for the executive office of health and human services for five years, and then most recently as senior manager at UMass Medical School. I've known Shane for over thirty years. Uh, I would say that Shane is probably my best friend. We've worked together in numerous capacities over the years, so I have a very, uh, good understanding of his work ethic and his commitment to excellence. Uh, as Josh kind of stated before, um, working with Savannah Palace and owning a liquor license is a net, is another, uh, very, uh, important. And it's, it's something that is under constant scrutiny. So for Shane to have had that liquor license for a number of years without any liquor violations, kind of shows you what kind of person he is uh, in terms of his credibility. Uh, the one thing I would like to speak on outside of his character is just, you know, I, I know Shane loves that area. I'm, as a kid, I even used D C Plaza too. Uh, I ver- I know the family very well, um, and I, I believe in Shane's vision, and I believe that Shane will, uh, try his very best to, um, make sure that all the promises and the commitments he is fulfilling. Thank you.
Very much. Are there any other individuals who have not previously testify, testified to wish to testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one, the board will take this matter under advisement. The record will be kept open until the sixteenth at five P M. Thank you very much. We're going to take a three-minute recess, and then we will move on to the next item.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.
Shane?
Yes?
I want, I don't know how I couldn't get to come in.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's, you're, you're right now, but, uh, it's okay. You probably want to mute yourself, and I can talk to you offline. I can call you in a little while. It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being there, Michelle.
Yeah, I have been here, but I just couldn't get to.
Just you being there motivates me, man, to do right, you know? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, bye.
Shane?
Hello? 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 Hi. Hi. I wasn't able to speak, so I wanted to know what, what do I do?
The, the meeting isn't, isn't on right now.
Shane?
Okay.
Wow.
And Shane, I think, left the meeting as well.
Oh, Shane is not available now?
I believe he left the meeting. His presentation was deleted.
Oh, okay.
And we will begin in just one more minute. Thank you all. We will now resume today's hearing before the Boston Cannabis Board. Calling Holland Brands S B L L C. The proposed license premise is one fifteen K Street, also known as five thirty-eight East First Street, South Boston. This is an application for a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license with hours of operating Monday through Saturday, nine A M. to nine P M. Sunday, ten A M. to seven P M. This is a non-equity applicant. The initial date of application was April second, two thousand nineteen. The date of filing with the Inspeccional Services Department was July second, two thousand nineteen, and the date of the community meeting was July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty. The presentation team includes Jeffrey Carbaloude, Timothy Carbaloude, Colette Phillips, Herbie Duvern, Michael Dreher, and Michael Ross. Is the applicant present?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. As a reminder, you will have ten minutes to present. Jasmine Winner, project manager, will give you a reminder at the five-minute mark and the eight-minute mark.
Thank you. Good afternoon, all. My name is Colette Phillips, and I am very proud to introduce you to Holland Brands and its proposal to open a facility in South Boston. I have spent the last thirty years in life, diversity, inclusion, and equity in Boston. This is the only cannabis operation that I'll be working with, and I will not be, have been working with them if I wasn't a thousand percent believing in the leadership. Next slide, please. We think this is the right location and the right building. Five thirty-eight East First Street is self-contained with thirty-eight parking spaces located at the edge of the neighborhood in an industrial zone. We think this is the right team, too. Next slide, please. Jeff and Tim are father and son team. The father, Jeff, is the son of Lebanese immigrant with a high school education, started a successful Boston-based construction firm and has been in operation for decades. His son, Tim, introduced his father to the cannabis industry when he learned of its medicinal effects to his mother's cancer treatment. The Caribou Lards believe very deeply in giving back and see this venture as an opportunity to do just that. Next slide, please. I'm very proud to introduce you to this diverse and talented team. Herbie Duvern, who will, you will hear from in a moment, is our director of security. His company, the Windwalker Group, like my firm, is an M B E company. Charlie Yon is our cannabis expert and director of operations, and Faisal Husini of Niche Instruct Engineering is our traffic engineer, and his company is also, uh, W B E. And finally, Greg Janey of Janey Construction is our general contractor. I first introduced Jarek to Jeff almost two years ago, and we are proud to engage his firm as one of the largest spend items if we are fortunate enough to be approved. Janey Construction is also an M B A. Next slide, please. Our diversity and inclusion plan isn't just a promise, but rather it exists in practice today. This is reflected in our current spend for all consultants and team members currently working on this project, which is seventy-five percent of our entire team. Next slide, please. In addition, we have supported some of Boston's most important community-based organizations. We are happy to supplement this information to the board with specific contribution information. In addition, we have the following goals. All contracts, twenty-five thousand dollars and more, will go to a minimum of fifty percent M B Es and W B E companies. We will host at least four job fairs a year targeting BIPOC communities and those who are disproportionately affected by the war on drugs. We will contribute over six fig- figure annually to organizations that serve BIPOC communities and residents of South Boston. We will be giving away four thousand square feet of our building, or thirty percent, to a community organization that prioritize diversity and inclusion. Next slide, please. Our employment plan is to hire fifty percent South Boston residents, seventy-five percent Boston residents, fifty percent members of BIPOC community, and fifty-two percent women. We know that we will aim to hit these numbers, notwithstanding that there is seventy-eight percent of South Boston residents are white. Our hourly minimum wage will be eighteen dollars an hour. We will also offer robust benefit packages, including full subsidies for M B T A and Blue Bank memberships for our employees. Next slide, please. In order to meet our goals, we will partner with a number of community-based organizations as we have presented here. There will be a director of diversity and inclusion within the company who will make regular reports to the board on our progress in these areas. I'd like, at this point, to turn it over to Herbie to tell you more about the facility itself. Next slide, please. Herbie?
Thank you, Colette. I am Herbie Duvernier for Windwalker Security. This site is perfect for our purposes. It is a self-contained warehouse building with internal parking within the internal courtyard for secure loading and parking. The site is completely surrounded on two office sides by bank of electrical transformers owned by EverSource. Next slide, please.
Five-minute warning.
These slides show buildings used by color. The blue represents commercial and industrial uses. The red represents residential uses. This zoning sub-district of South Boston is entirely commercial and industrial. Next slide, please. Jeff is in the construction business. We intend to use all of Jeff's knowledge and all of the tactical support of our general contractor, Jenny Construction, to build Boston's finite dispensary to date. Next slide, please. Our greatest asset is our parking and internal queuing space. With thirty-six spaces and ample room, we anticipated that we will never have a line. Next slide, please. The most important thing we can do is prevent product from getting into the hands of miners. Everything we sell will be R F I decoded, and we will know when it was sold. Our video records will trace exactly when the item was sold. If we learn that one of our products was diverted, we will be able to determine the exact date, time, and person who it was sold to, and of course, we will provide our information to the police. Next slide, please. Faisal is here to insert more information about traffic, but to put this in perspective, we anticipate our use to be consistent with any other active retail use as shown in the chart here. We also intend to give back in this regard. We know that parking is a major issue in the South Boston. We are therefore going to allow our direct residential obaters to park for free in our secure parking lot overnight. Our employees will also park off-site as needed. Next slide, please. Our plan is to hire Plymouth Harmer Group to manage our secure cash pickups. Product delivery will be managed by Windwalker. I'm now going to turn this back to Colette to wrap up. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Herbie. We are proud to support the, of the support we have earned to date. We started out with a part of Boston that voted to support retail cannabis above the average in the city as a whole. Our team, next slide, please, have conducted over thirty-five meetings since first proposing this concept. From our first meetings with elected officials over two years ago to our regular check-ins with community leaders at Muld's Diner, we have continued to meet with and talk with neighbors and stakeholders. We have received over one hundred and ninety-five letters of support and petition signature, and most from within half a mile of the site. In short, we want to be the best neighbors we can be. Next slide, please. Here is an image of where our support comes from. Next slide, please. I'd like to end with a summary of our major commitments. Four thousand square feet of space for community use, contributions to area organization, free overnight parking for abutters, requiring that all of our customers sign a good neighbor agreement, mandatory community service for all employees and our owners, and hiring of local residents, as well as other commitments we mentioned before. Thank you for your attention. We are happy to answer all and any questions.
Thank you very much. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, I just put my questions. Let's see. So we have received, I, I appreciate the fact in this neighborhood that is, um, always craving more parking, that you have thirty-six parking spots on site. We've seen, we, we have received a lot of correspondence about the traffic impacts. Can you just speak to the traffic impacts, how you see them?
Hi, Madam Chair. This is, uh, Mike Ross, attorney with the group. Um, we actually had our, our consultant Faisal Husini, uh, join us on the call, so he'll be able to, uh, help supplement that. We've, he's reviewed the. so he'll be able to help supplement that. He's reviewed the site with an eye towards the traffic issues. But I just did want to add that, in an effort to help alleviate concerns, our opening hour will not affect the morning commute. We open at 9:00 a.m. And our other mitigating effort was to try to create overnight parking for abutting residents. I know parking is an issue in that community. I'll turn it over to Faisal if he has anything to add.
Thank you, thank you, members of the board, and my name is Faisal Husini with Niche Engineering. So from a traffic perspective, we did take a look at the site, similar to any traffic impacts we do. And we have done many cannabis sites out there in Massachusetts. And we rely heavily on our current standards, especially publication published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, where we look at the existing site and generate the existing traffic pattern as it exists today. And then also, we add the dispensary land use, and we generate the traffic, and we get the difference between the two. So in summary, I would say that the additional trips that would be added by the site on a daily basis would be 146 vehicles entering and then 147 exiting. And the reason for that difference is just the math calculations. In the peak hour, where it's in the midday, we start the midday peak hour, and then there is the afternoon peak hour. In the midday peak hour, we have one vehicle entering in the midday, and then six vehicles exiting. That's a differential in number of vehicles. And then the PM, we have an additional 11 vehicles entering and then 13 vehicles exiting. Given that that value of vehicles per hour is really insignificant, and that's why we have determined, based on professional opinion, and we can do the analysis and show you by the number that the impacts are insignificant, they're very small. So for that reason, we don't think this site will generate any negative impacts on the existing traffic patterns. And not to consider the COVID traffic pattern right now, and these numbers based on the pre-COVID. So we anticipate that the impacts are very insignificant. And also, we tend to break the number of trips by mode. So we use the City of Boston guidelines, and based on those guidelines, we expect to have on a daily basis 33% walkers, people walking or bicycling. We have 15% using transit, and then also, we have autos, about 52%. And that's based on the average throughout the city. And we would hope that we will sway the customer to use more of the transit side than the auto side.
And then my next question is actually more of a comment than it is a question. I know Mr. Ross has been on some of these other hearings where I've dug a little deeper into the cost of these proposals. I just want to make a comment for the board and for everyone who's listening. Sometimes we're criticized about our agendas and how they work. The first applicant was an equity applicant, who only applied, I think, nine months ago. This applicant applied almost two years ago, and it's clear from their presentation that they've already invested a lot into the neighborhood. It's shocking to see what they've already put in for rent in an eye-opening way, not in any other commentary. So we're happy that we could finally get you on the agenda today. This is very new for all of us, so we're trying to understand these things as we go along. But it struck me as we have one applicant that applied nine months ago, and here we have an applicant that applied almost two years ago, and we're hearing them both on the same day.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Thank you. The application is very well done. I do have some questions about very good goals on DNI. I have questions about just worker voice. So I didn't hear any mention about whistleblower policies or feedback loops or what kind of culture you're trying to create for workers aside from diversity and inclusion. Could you talk a little bit more about that, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. There most certainly will be a feedback loop established within the company for kind of blind whistleblowing and complaints of the like. We did specifically mention in the presentation a peer-to-peer mentorship and company culture audits for employees identified as minorities and women. And we go into a little bit more detail in the summary. And I think there, what the goal there and the culture with the company is is very much like the culture of what Jeff Caribou had, has been doing at his own company, Metric, which is to try to retain employees for as long as possible and to try to move them up into management positions. And the idea here is to mentor existing employees to help and assist with existing employees in terms of expungement, because we certainly do want to have people who are coming out of criminal records and trying to get a second chance and renewal of life, especially in the industry, someone who might have been punished for cannabis and the like. And so the effort is to help and assist those employees to move up. And I would say that is the prevailing culture of the employment environment. And maybe Jeff could talk more about that if you have additional questions.
Jeff, you need to unmute yourself.
Excuse my voice and my coughing. I just am recovering from COVID, unfortunately. But our practice of training, hiring people, we've been doing this successfully for close to 40 years, maybe not, excuse me, inception, but certainly in the last 25 years, bringing people up through the ranks, training them properly, and in hopes that some stay and some move on to better opportunities. And we've been quite successful at that.
Thank you, and I'm certainly hopeful that you recover speedily on this. Sorry to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon. A couple things. One is on the community space. How is that managed? And how are you staffing that? And is it good? Both said they'll be working on one side, working on the other side. Can you explain a little bit more how you're planning to manage that?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. The idea there is to work with the leadership of South Boston and to also, as Colette Phillips mentioned, identify the type of use that can help and support promoting diversity and inclusion. And then essentially having that space work separately and apart from our operation. We want to make sure it's safe and it works and that it's properly built out. But it's not something for the company to program or to create community spacing for. It's intended as a gift to the broader community, to say this is prime real estate in a very desired area of the city, and we want to make it available for the appropriate community-based organization in concert with the City of Boston and its leadership.
So it's open for events, and folks can rent it?
Yeah, I mean, I think so, Commissioner, but if a community-based organization was to want to go in there, or as opposed to just being open, I think that there might be a nonprofit that wants to be in that space. And I think that's got to be a conversation that the leadership of South Boston and the City of Boston and its elected leadership enter into, as opposed to us saying what it should be.
Okay. So you're not taking a position of what it should be. You're going to let them decide that?
Yeah, we've taken some initial, just in the socializing of this concept, we've certainly talked to anyone that will listen to elected officials and told them about this opportunity in that space. And if we're successful to get forward, we really would want to hear from the leadership of this community to help us determine what should be in there.
In terms of the annual giving, you said six-figure annual giving. Is that in total to all the organizations you're working with?
Maybe Jeff or Colette wants to take that question. Jeff, you're muted. I think you're...
Okay, there we go. Excuse me. We're starting out with a minimum of $100,000. We've already been giving money through COVID. As a family, we've been philanthropic for a very long time through COVID. I had Colette actually help with the mayor's office, Kim Janey, head of city council, to support a whole number of groups. Yeah, excuse me. And so we're going to work with the community in the city and with our own philanthropic goals to continue to give to the community, the local community. And it may not just be South Boston. It may filter into the surrounding areas, but groups that are needy, groups that need help. And so we're going to continue that process and hopefully grow it.
So you're thinking of operating support, that kind of thing, sort of the grant program where you can go to folks?
Well, for example...
In terms of what criteria?
What's the criteria for giving?
Well, yeah, in terms of you saying who would need it, but based on what?
Well, there are so many. I would tell you that there are so many. When I went to do this, we've been doing this, but during COVID, we were sitting around watching TV, and we were watching single parents with children struggling. They could not get funding from the, and I can't remember the fund that the city put together. So what we did is we went outside of that fund and gave money to single parents, battered women, food banks. So we'll continue to look outside of the arena where people have access to money and give to those groups that are really struggling and don't have access to money. I hope that answers it for you. I can't tell you exactly who they will be, because if you look at where we are today during COVID, our philanthropic goals were much different the year before COVID. And who knows where we'll be in a year. I hope a lot better. I hope nobody gets this. I hope they get through this. I ended up with a bad case of it for some reason, not sure why. But I would tell you, we'll look at it at the time, but we like giving to the community. We like helping people.
And could I just add, I think it's worth mentioning, Commissioner, Jeff has a history and relationship in giving to some of the recovery community organizations that are particularly in this immediate area as well. And he would also intend to continue to support that. There's been some disproportionate pain in this particular community around the issues around recovery and drug recovery. And so Jeff, long before this ever was a thing, has been involved in that, and he will most certainly continue that.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
This last question for you, you made a point of saying, even though 70% of South Boston residents are white, you were sort of committed to this goal. So talking a little bit about how you're building that out outside as a resident of South Boston.
Commissioner, I'll take that question. I don't know if you know me. I have an organization called Get Connected that is very connected to the diverse communities. We work with people like the Urban League, the NAACP, Amplify Latinx, Alpha, the Black MBAs, you name it. And from every single BIPOC organization you can think of, so Jeff will be leveraging my network for this. I will be leveraging my network for it. So you can rest assured, when we make the commitment for inclusion, that I'm putting my reputation on the line, and that's going to happen.
Thank you so much. I knew I'd hear about you.
Commissioner, just one thing to add, if I could. There is a disproportionate impact community right in South Boston as well. It's about half a mile from this site. So the disproportionate communities, as measured by the CCC, are really all over the Commonwealth. And in fact, one is within a half mile of us as well.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner St. Gien, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, just some quick questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. Really great application. Super impressed by your leadership team and who you've put together thus far. I think it really signals a commitment to diversity throughout the organization, so I appreciate that. And I also, what Mr. Ross just mentioned about the commitment to recovery efforts, we do know South Boston has been particularly impacted by, in particular, recent heroin and opioid use. And so I think I also very much appreciate a commitment to those groups as well. I just had a quick question. The three establishments that you currently have, they currently have ownership interest in, I believe it's Hudson, North Attleboro, and Fitchburg. Are those operating establishments or those before the Mass Board as well?
Hudson, no, excuse me. Hudson is up and running as of a few weeks ago. North Attleboro is permitted and should go under construction in the next month or so. Fitchburg is actually a grow facility that we will be teaming with a company out of California. We have no expertise in growing cannabis. And so we hope that in the next four to five months should be in construction.
Okay, great. No, I was going to ask if they were in operation, what their employment breakdown was, except for Hudson not in yet, and I don't know Hudson to be a particularly diverse place. So I don't know that you would have a typically diverse employment there.
We are making an effort. Charlie could actually speak to this. He's doing a good job. So if you could just give him a minute.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Commissioner. Of the 22 employees we have in Hudson, two identify as members of minority communities as identified by the Cannabis Control Commission. Eleven identify as women. Two identify as people with disabilities. And three identify as members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Additionally, we currently employ five members from areas disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs.
Great. That's great. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming prepared with that as well. And then the other question, this is more out of curiosity, and as I meant, I don't know if you were here for the previous applicant. They had a number, like a $600,000 number as their cost. You have a $2.5 million number. I know the rent differential is incredible, but I just wondered, do you see that cost in build-out? Like where's your, where do you see that number coming from?
Yeah, so it's across the board. It's operating expenses, it's startup costs, it's employees. And we believe construction will be about $1.7 million of that.
Okay, good. I hate to ask you so many questions, and I'm so glad you're feeling better.
It's fine. No, it's fine. It's okay.
I've known a number of people who have been really sick, so I appreciate you being here. And those were my only questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take testimony, beginning with elected officials or representatives of elected officials.
Good afternoon. City Council, Michael Flaherty, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, councillor.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Madam Secretary, and Commissioners. My name is City Council, Michael Flaherty at large. And a couple of things from the testimony. I want to make it perfectly clear that the mitigation support should follow the directly impacted community. should follow the directly impacted community. And happy to take any of the commissioners for a tour throughout the neighborhood to see that we have the three of the, three of the, some of the, three of probably the largest public housing developments. And there's a significant need in the community. Need for affordable housing, need for job creation, need for recovery. And so plenty of programs, plenty of nonprofits, plenty of community-based organizations that are in need of support and funding that would be the most appropriate beneficiaries of any type of mitigation and support that comes from this proposal, should it be approved. So I just want to make that perfectly clear. I cannot support something that's not going to support the directly impacted community. And so if I'm hearing from the proponents that the directly impacted community and all of those nonprofits and organizations and associations, many of them very diverse, by the way, are not going to benefit, then why would I want to support something like that that doesn't support the community that is supporting them? So I wanted to state that for the record. I'm also here to make a general statement as to the, the, the citing of retail cannabis dispensaries within the community. If the board approves this particular location, in no way should that be taken as a signal that it's open season in the community. I, I personally authored the half-mile buffer rule. It's a text amendment to the zoning code which protects any one community from bearing the brunt of a concentration of cannabis establishments. It was a long, transparent and comprehensive process, lots of meetings and hearings all across the city with input from residents, neighborhood associations, community-based organizations and nonprofits across the city. While this location may be acceptable to some, another location within the half-mile buffer will not be acceptable. And it will be the proverbial line in the sand for me, my team, as well as my neighborhood. So I therefore respectfully request that this board, that if this application is approved today, that the board deem any future permeations within that half-mile buffer location to be unsupported, unaccepted and unapproved. And as it pertains to sort of the wider issues around mitigation, I suggest that folks take a tour of the neighborhood. I'm happy to host that tour. Meet the leaders of the neighborhood associations and the nonprofits. Find out who they serve and the need that they have. And I think we would all come to the same conclusion that if there is significant need within the community that very much is in dire need of that support. And quite frankly, if that's the neighborhood that's going to be putting up with the impacts of this particular location, be it traffic, whatever, that's the neighborhood should benefit. That's the definition of mitigation. The mitigation fund should not go all across the city in different neighborhoods. And I say that as an at-large councillor, I would be saying the same thing if I was talking about a dispensary in Jamaica Plain or over in Alston. The directly impacted community should be the community that is able to benefit from that mitigation. So I, I think I'm making my statement perfectly clear, deferring to the board in their wisdom and how they decide. But I just want to make it perfectly clear, if this one is approved, I'm gonna mark the half-mile buffer and I'm gonna be on this. And I'll be watching this board and the zoning board of appeals very closely as it pertains to whether or not the half-mile buffer is going to be honored moving forward, giving predictability to the process and allowing folks to seek out opportunities in real estate that's not within the half-mile buffer further. I'm also gonna be following where the mitigation commitments are and making sure that the mitigation flows to the needs of that respective community. Otherwise, why would any community support this happening in their neighborhood if the mitigation is not gonna go to the organizations and the nonprofits and to the youth, into the elderly, into the public housing developments in that community? It just defies logic. So for the record, you know where I stand.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or representatives from elected officials who wish to testify?
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question, given the councillors? There's no way to preemptively prohibit anyone from applying for a license before this board?
Nope. Only statutory prohibition would be if you are within 500 feet of an existing K-312 school. Otherwise, the due process right of any applicant to go through the process.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Dillon?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair Members of the Board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We'd like to loudly echo Councillor Flaherty's testament. ONS held a community meeting on January 29th, 2020. The application has both letters of support and opposition. After reviewing all feedback, we feel that this would be the best location in the City Point area, again echoing Councillor Flaherty's point. We would like to go on record of this application. And we ask that the applicant continue to engage with the community as they move forward through the process. Thank you.
Are there any other elected officials or representatives of elected officials who wish to testify?
I am of the chair members of the board and a candidate from Councillor Fling's office. The councillor sent a letter to the board today and it reads as follows. I write, I write to you regarding Holland Brands' proposed cannabis dispensary located at 115 K3538 East First Street. This proposal has received significant concerns from neighbors citing traffic and pedestrian safety challenges as well as other quality of life issues. The proposed site is also a high-traffic area that is located in a residential part of the neighborhood that abuts industrial areas with vehicles, trucks, buses traveling frequently on the street. The location is also not in proximity to an MBTA station of public transportation. Therefore, many customers will likely drive or walk to the, to this location. The added traffic having a dispensary at that location will disrupt the neighborhood, making the area even more congested. Many neighbors have reached out to me and expressed their concerns about traffic speeding, pedestrian safety and other quality of life issues. In addition, should this proposal be approved by the board, South Boston civic organizations and neighbors have also emphasized legitimate and serious concerns about how critically important it will be for the half-mile buffer zone between dispensaries to be implemented as required by law, respected and strictly enforced with no exception. On account on these issues and others, I have concerns regarding Holland Brands' application at this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other elected officials or representatives of elected officials? We will now.
Leslie May, Leslie, Madam Secretary, may I just add, I just want to, once again, be clear. As I tune into the cannabis board hearings, I just want to hear the commissioners ask other applications in other parts of the city if their mitigation is going to go to South Boston, specifically the three public housing developments. I want them, I want them to be very consistent when asking where the mitigation funds go and whether or not three of the, the biggest and most densely populated public housing developments will be the beneficiary of any other cannabis that's approved by this board in the future. And again, happy to take folks on a tour.
Thank you, councillor. I will say for the record, this board cannot consider mitigation efforts. The 3%, should an application be approved, the, the 3% of revenue that the city takes as part of the host community agreement is legally required to go back to the immediate area impacted by any, any cannabis establishment.
And, and just to echo what Leslie's saying, councillor, those, those, I think those mitigation efforts go to the support that the community gives to an application. They kind of, I mean, I think you know too, they work those out beforehand, but we, I will ask those questions. But we don't get involved in where they go.
That's fair enough. We have an association of nonprofits that are struggling and have been struggling since the, the moment of, of the pandemic. To the applicant's credit, was one of the individuals that actually stepped up to support those nonprofits. But I want to make it perfectly clear to folks that are asking the questions about mitigation, that there is a lot of need throughout the entire city of Boston, including the South Boston community and the association of nonprofits doing tremendous work during some very difficult times. And they need the focus, quite frankly, on them as it pertains to if they're gonna support cannabis in their community. So again, I think I spoke, spoke, and I, and I speak on behalf of all the elected officials because we're a recovery community. We've had our fair share. We've got the Gavin House, the Anza House, the Cushing House for Girls. We view ourselves as cannabis. One of the commissioners asked what that space should be. Maybe it should be for AA and NA meetings. It should be what the community wants it to be. It should be what the director butters want as, as director butters that are gonna be putting up with, with the traffic in the line. So again, mitigation and the devil in the details as to what is going to happen with the community space, that will be at the direction of the local elected officials in the community, in the community organizations, to decide what's best for the community.
I agree. I, it looks like this team is willing to work with you. There's lots of, lots of heads nodding and they look like they're open to these suggestions. And so I recommend that the applicant reach out and follow up.
I just sounded like it was kind of, you know, they wanted to be Santa Claus for all other parts of the city when there's, there's a need in, in the community, the directly impacted community.
Thank you very much. We will now move to public testimony. As a reminder, your testimony will be limited to two minutes. You can also submit written testimony. Please unmute yourself when you are called. If you have not already signed up, you can also sign up using the link that has been placed in the chat by our project manager Jasmine Nguyen. Calling Mark Corby. And when you are called. I'm sorry, and I apologize. When you are called, please also state your address for the record. Please go ahead, Mr. Corby.
Hi, this is Mark. Yeah, I'm a local resident at 368 West Third Street. I think that the traffic plan, the location and parking here are all well thought out. I think this is a good location in the community. So I just want to express my support for this venture. And I think it's gonna provide a great opportunity to give back. My only concern would be like people lingering in the area smoking like at the, in the parking lot or something like that. I don't know if there's any plans to prevent that, but yeah, again, just want to express my support. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Calling Maria Malone.
Hi, thank you. For all the commissioners, thank you for your time today. You have mentioned that you're new to this process and so are we. And we're very confused. And so I would encourage you, if there's anything you can do to help us as residents and people that are directly affected by understanding the process and the, what approvals are needed, we would greatly appreciate it. Contrary to the prior applicant, this applicant on occasion, on the prior community meeting, has not taken the time, the courtesy of presenting to us directly as the owners of the business. And I find that extremely offensive in terms of their actual presentation. A few things I'd ask you to consider or look into further, the traffic study. I believe when we first looked at it, I don't know if they had a subsequent one, was based on some data based on marijuana establishments in the western part of the country, which I think is not applicable to here, to us in the city. Also, if you're not familiar with our neighborhood, and I should have mentioned, I'm at 525 East First, directly across from this proposed establishment. But we have a Greyhound bus depot right down the street, FedEx, UPS trucks. We're right across from the substation with large trucks coming in and out. We are in a residential light industrial neighborhood. This would be a significant deviation in terms of zoning. I think the hours of operation are very aggressive. If you didn't notice on their plan, they have 10 registers. In comparison, my local liquor store has one register. It also appears that they have had a change in their management team from the original presentation in terms of their chief operations officer. And just based on the presentation today, it seems like the biggest factor is the diversity of the staff as opposed to many impacts that will have. And lastly, while it's nice that they have reached out to several neighborhoods in South Boston, our neighborhood is not officially recognized or part of any neighborhood association. And so frankly, I think that that's meaningless.
Thank you for the minutes. You can also submit written testimony. Calling Rory Will. Please state your address for the record.
Hi, I'm a resident at 320 D Street in South Boston. And I just wanted to voice my support for this project and think it would be great for the neighborhood. And I hope it gets approved.
Thank you. And I apologize, I skipped over Katie Alefimoff. Please state your address for the record. Moving on to David Grunbeck. Please state your address for the record.
Hi, can, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dave Grunbeck. I live at 268 West Third Street in South Boston. I wanted to give my support behind this project. I think it would be a great, great thing for the community, especially those that live in South Boston that do participate in both medical and recreational marijuana. It would be the only spot in the city that would allow the residents of South Boston to walk. Not having a car makes it very difficult to get around to the city. So I, I just think this would be a great thing and I, I really do hope this gets approved.
Thank you. Calling Ryan Doherty. Please state your address for the record.
Hi, this is Ryan Doherty. I live at Two Ward Court, South Boston. I've lived in Boston for the last 10 years and South Boston for the last three. I just want to voice my support for this as well. I think, you know, not only would it be great for everyone who lives in South Boston, but also the location seems to make sense being on the edge of the, of the community there and not directly on Broadway, which would be, I think, kind of too much. Additionally, with the parking lot and having the shuttle for the employee parking, I think that plan just makes a ton of sense to me. So I just want to voice my support once again and hope this goes through.
Thank you very much. Calling Brendan Albert. Please state your address for the record.
Hi, yes, I live on 540 7 East First Street. My wife and I have lived here for 11 years and have witnessed quite a bit during that time, especially when it comes to traffic issues, congestion and pedestrian safety. East First Street is not the right location for this proposed business. Adding a high-volume business with 36 parking spaces and likely hundreds of additional vehicles to an already wild west, which is what I call it, like traffic situation at East First, will have enormous negative impacts to the neighborhood. As it stands, thousands of vehicles pass by our home every day. Light industrial vehicles, FedEx trucks, UPS trucks, Verizon Comcast vehicles, off-duty MBTA buses, Greyhound buses, Uber Lyft drivers, passenger vehicles that use First Street as a cut-through. East First Street is also a favorite street for runners, bikers, walkers, with or without dogs. It is a go-to route to Castle Island if you're coming from another part of town. Adding this proposed business will create a major burden, including safety for those who use sidewalks and street for recreational activities. The proposed 36 customer parking lot should not be considered a positive, nor should the 10 cashiers. Stop and shop on East Broadway has 36 parking spots and only seven cashiers. Foodies on West Broadway has eight parking spots and only four cashiers. The neighborhood cannot support this increased volume of customers. This establishment would be the equivalent of a supermarket just moving in next door. I think early I heard that the proponent has long made donations to the recovery community, which I appreciate. From a personal standpoint, I'm a sober person from drugs and alcohol. And not in my wildest dreams that I think 11 years ago, that a business of this type would move in across the street at Accurate Fasteners Building. The Article 68 zoning did not envision this. The last few lines under section 68-1, statement of purpose goals and objection.
Sorry, that is your two minutes. You can still submit written testimony. Thank you very much. Calling Kate Gutierrez. Please state your address.
Hi, 547 East First Street. My name is Kate Gutierrez. I live directly across from the proposed, proposed location. I'm a South Boston homeowner, voter and taxpayer since 2002. When I moved from a more densely populated neighborhood to this quieter, less dense mix of residential and light industry across from a low-impact, non-retail manufacturing business, Accurate Fasteners, it was my choice. Beginning in May 2010, I participated through the 16-month-long process that created new Article 68 zoning that governs this location. Alongside elected officials, local developers, business owners, we attended countless meetings, working groups, collaborating to establish new zoning that would quote, "improve quality of life and promote the public health, safety and welfare people of South Boston." This parcel sits in a local industrial zone. It's not, it is intended for light industrial, non-retail, non-high customer traffic, non-high-volume businesses. Not only is a cannabis shop not allowed as of right, a liquor store is not allowed as of right, adult entertainment is forbidden, a bar is forbidden, a clinic is forbidden, a retail business is not allowed as of right, a community center is not allowed as of right. Even a takeout restaurant larger than 1,000 square feet is forbidden in this local industrial zone. Further concerning, this applicant has a long history of fighting to preserve the character of his own neighborhoods. So why would he want to destroy ours? In 2014, he opposed development near his Palm Beach, Florida home. In 2019, he opposed a tiki bar in a hotel near his Martha Vineyard home, since it would create disruption in the residential neighborhood. In November 2020, he opposed expansion of another Martha's Vineyard home. That it would create disruption in the residential neighborhood. In November twenty twenty, he opposed expansion at another Martha's Vineyard home. In, sorry, he wrote, "The plans are unsympathetic to the surrounding neighborhood. The project will only cause substantial detriment to the."
Ma'am, that is two minutes again for, for the, every, respecting everyone's time. Please limit your testimony to two minutes. Again, you can still submit written testimony and that is given just as much weight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Mary Cooney, please state your address. Calling Arvid Von Taub, please state your address.
Thank you. I live at five thirty five East First Street, directly across the street from the proposed site. And I oppose the dispensary for two reasons. The first is quality of life. This portion of East First Street is still in its infancy in converting from industrial to residential and mixed use. It is dishonest of the applicant to say that this area is entirely commercial. Almost the entire length of the southern side of East First Street is residential and home to many young families with young children. However, East First Street and its parks are also visited by those that abuse drugs and alcohol. Allowing a dispensary to open in our neighborhood would give fuel, literally and figuratively, to destructive behavior. It would be a step back for progress of our growing residential neighborhood and a decline in the quality of our lives and those that may be looking to move here. Check any Redfin or Zillow listing. Do any advertise close proximity to a pot shop? No, of course not. Additionally, the proposed hours of operation are completely out of line, even with most businesses on Broadway. That would be, should be significantly scaled back. The second reason I oppose this dispensary is that the use would not be something that everyone in the community could enjoy. This historic site is a clean slate for a business to open that could be enjoyed by everyone in the immediate neighborhood and the entire South Boston community. A dispensary would only serve a limited segment of society. This is fundamentally unfair to the residents. In the applicant's own words, it would take steps to quote, add a barrier between the sidewalk and the site to reduce visibility, end quote. Our neighborhood doesn't want the kind of business that has to wall itself off from the community. That is the wrong.
Very sorry, that is two minutes. You can also submit written testimony. Calling Stefan Kowlazek. Please state your address. Calling Lucy Fitzpatrick, please state your address. Calling David Schramm, please state your address.
Hi, I'm David Schramm. I live at five thirty five East First Street across from the proposed location. Um, I'm opposed to this location for several reasons. Um, first, while the applicants have characterized this as an industrial area on the edge of the neighborhood, that simply is not true. This is a residential neighborhood. There are close to a hundred condos and apartments on, on the south side of First Street between I and K Streets. Also, I feel that a lot of what they talked about in the presentation doesn't add up. They say they want to hire half of the employees from the South Boston community, but they also say they're going to pay eighteen dollars an hour. You can't live on eighteen dollars an hour in South Boston. So I don't see how that drives. Also, the proposed hours are very long and if we want to live in a quiet neighborhood, at least in the evening, having a twelve-hour-a-day uh, business and operation is not including with that. For these reasons, I'm opposed to this.
Thank you very much. Calling Joanna Jackson, please state your, your address. Calling Tyler Murphy, please state your address. Calling Julia Moraski, please state your address. Calling Brian Graves, please state your.
Present, Brian Graves. I'm at five oh three East First. Um, I want to first try not to repeat everything that my good neighbors have already said. I agree with everything they've already said. Uh, the traffic here is uh, nearly untenable. What um, the developer hasn't told you and what you may or may not know is that in twenty eighteen, a new project for a hundred and thirty-five units, including a hundred and eighty-three parking spaces, was cited and approved between H and I Streets. So any of the figures that have already been bantered around about what the traffic is does not include that. They're breaking ground already. They've already started site work, so that will, I'm sure, into the near future, uh, go on. But um, but as you can tell, I'm opposed. Um, and, and also I'd point out, anyone on First Street who is a neighbor to this establishment is opposed because we live here. Um, a- as others have, have said, uh, Councilor Flaherty, I'd invite you down to come and visit with the neighbors of First Street so that you can actually see the, the conditions of the traffic on First Street. Um, and there has been a difference, of course, between pre and post COVID. Um, and we are starting to see that traffic increase. EverSource has a nice park across the street. People cross at that crosswalk at I Street constantly. And we have to fear for our lives sometimes for the speeders that are on that street. And uh, some of you may know there's a speed gun a little bit further closer to the elbow for the express purpose of trying to slow traffic. But it, it doesn't really uh, help that much. But um, but traffic, safety are my biggest concerns. Parking, um, also another issue with the H and I Street project that's already been approved. This is not the right site. This business uh, does not conform to Article sixty eight and specifically for those that are conditional that are listed in Article sixty eight, take a look at Article six. And Article six talks to.
Thank you. That is two minutes. You can also submit written testimony. Calling Kathleen DeBois, please state your address.
Yes, hi, um, I'm at eighteen Emerson Street and I'm a resident um, in South Boston. Um, I wanted to voice my support for this project. Um, I think that the fact that they have adequate parking for visitors as well as their staff. Um, and it's open after commuting hours is a really big plus. Um, I like that they have a philanthropic element that they plan to implement. And I admire their commitment to enhancing safety in the community as well as the dedication to being good neighbors. Um, and I also like that their team is local to the region and make them known in the broader Boston community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Calling Thomas Callis, please state your address.
Hi, Thomas Callis, um, two fifty-nine Emerson Street. Um, I would like to uh, voice my support for this project. This site seems like an ideal site, uh, particularly the way it's configured with uh, plenty of parking. I've actually met with the owners and uh, they are professionals, uh, responsible. Uh, they seem very committed to the neighborhood. And I believe will make uh, good operators. Uh, they seem uh, a hundred percent qualified for this and uh, with that, uh, I'll, I'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling Kevin Quinlan. Calling Isaac Lopez, please state your address.
Yeah, hi, this is Isaac Lopez. I'm at one eighty-sixth uh, West Second Street. I am a resident of South Boston since two thousand and four. Um, my wife and I moved here from um, the Back Bay and are raising our children here. And I am in support of this particular project. I have uh, met the operators before, uh, and all the projects that I've seen coming forth, I haven't seen a project that's been so well thought out and planned. Taking into consideration the um, the, the location, the impact uh, of the community and uh, helping the community with, with revenue. Uh, so with that said, I, I believe they make good operators as well. Um, and I'm in support.
Thank you. E. Owen Donlin, please state your address. Calling Karen Foley from Counselor Anusa Asabi George's office. Karen, are you present? Calling Dave Grunbeck, I believe was already called. Calling Lisa Ballard, please state your address.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, I had issues before. Um, my name is Lisa Ballard. I live at five forty-nine East First Street. I'm directly across the street from the property. Um, I would like to say that I am vehemently opposed to a project like this, a business like this opening up in my neighborhood that I have lived in this house for seventeen years. I am raising both of my children here. I think that this business is way too close to two neighborhood schools. My children walk to and from school every single day. I have been involved in the community since my children were born thirteen years ago. They walk to the park, which is two blocks away. They go to Little League. They go to the hockey rink down the street. This is not the place for this business. We have fought so hard to keep a community and a neighborhood here. And I do think it's important to also emphasize the other comments that people made, that this is not an industrial area. There are million-dollar condos that have been built on First Street for the past ten years that the city has approved to transform this street into a more residential area. That is what is bringing people to this street, not businesses like this. And as far as the traffic study goes, I would also like to emphasize that it did not take into, into account the power plant project that is going to bring thousands more people into our neighborhood. It also does not include projects two blocks away that have already been, been approved by the city to add hundreds more apartments to our street. So you cannot take those things into account and you have to think about the people that live here, that are raising families here, that are choosing to bring their families here. And I would, I would invite anyone to tell me that they would want to live across the street with their family across the street from a business like this. It is not the right location.
Thank you. Calling I'm sorry, give you one moment. Calling Brian Price, please state your address.
How you doing, Brian Price, six I Street? I'm most definitely opposed to this development. Um, just to go on with what Mr. Graves was saying before he was cut off. It simply doesn't conform to Article sixty eight. Um, which says the business has to not adverse, adversely affect the neighborhood, which it most definitely does. Uh, be of no serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians from use, which again, it most definitely does, and be of no nuisance created by its use, which is, which it most definitely does. In regards to the parking and the traffic study, they gave no, no thought to the development on H and I, which is already broken ground or to, which was already stated, the power plant project that will add thousands of cars to the community. This would be a great mistake to put it in this area. It'd be, I think it'd be very disadvantageous to the director butters. And I'd like a, I'd like to say, to ask why they would allow us to park in a lot after nine PM. I, I assume that's to placate the local residents. But who parks after nine PM when they got home from work at five? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Calling Jeff Stoker, please state your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Stecker. I live at five nineteen East First Street and I live about a half a block away from this location. I am in opposition to this proposal. The reasons are several, but I'm going to focus my concerns over traffic, parking and transportation in this area. As a resident on this street, I can tell you two things firsthand. One, we are desperately lacking parking in this area. And two, traffic is already very busy on this street. Adding a retail property that relies on customer turnover throughout the day to survive will make parking an even more untenable situation. As you heard from their own traffic study, they estimate that more than fifty percent of their customers will be arriving by car. At the last public meeting that was held regarding this matter, as someone indicated earlier in their testimony, their first traffic study was based out of a comparison study in suburban Denver, Colorado. That comparison to this densely populated area, it's irrelevant. And I have little confidence in this new traffic study as a result. In addition, what they don't account for is the number of people who will likely take ride sharing services to this location. The parking and vehicle, vehicle idling, waiting for business that is associated with that activity. This is not a place that is central or easy to a large array of public transportation options. This is a major problem with the traffic in a neighborhood that is highly residential. The foot traffic is residential. I can tell you that pulling out of the driveway is dangerous every time. Walking my dogs and crossing the street is dangerous every time. Adding this layer of commercial traffic is wrong. I would also note for the commissioners that for those who have spoken out in support of this, based on their stated address, none of them so far live within a three-block radius of this location. Why ask? You deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any individuals who have not previously testified who wish to testify? And again, I would ask that people not repeat what has already been said and simply.
Yes, my name's Kevin Lally. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Kevin Lally. I live at three ninety-two East First Street, South Boston. I'm also the president of the Gate Heaven Neighborhood Association. I just want to clear up one misconception that was said earlier was that there is no neighborhood group, which, which lies within this group, Gate Heaven. This is in the heart of the Gate Heaven's Neighborhood Association. We've been around for over ten years. Uh, the gentlemen who are running this did meet with us on a couple of different occasions. And I just wanted to put that in for the record that there is a neighborhood group there and we are well-publicized and they have met with us.
Thank you very much. Uh, Murphy, please state your address.
Yeah, hi, this is Tyler Murphy, five ninety-eight East Second Street. Thank you for hearing me. Really appreciate it. You know, as we go through these hearings and we hear from these different organizations in Boston, obviously they're all becoming part of the fabric of different neighborhoods. And a lot of things get said and you have to wonder, are these groups going to live up to the promises that they set? And I think that, you know, actions speak much louder than words. Uh, and so I went over to Hudson and looked at the facility that this group has built there. I went inside, talked to a number of individuals, and I think it's really impressive uh, what this group has done. It's a very, very low-key operation. There's not a lot of vehicle trips. There's not any noise. And I think you have a great diversity of people who are using the facility. Um, and so when I try to look at what they've done in Hudson and then try to picture that at this location as being part of the fabric of our neighborhood, I really think it fits in very well because this specific area has a lot of business activity, but none of it is stuff that people can interact with. You have crane rental companies and bus companies and power stations and it really is a bizarre area of the neighborhood where you have dense housing backing up to an area of business that no one can really interact with. There are a couple of smaller areas and shops that you can interact with, but on an overall basis, I think that this really fits in well with something that people can actually use and enjoy. And, and become part of the neighborhood. You know, with the Edison Power Plant project that's coming, when we talk about traffic and those types of things, you know, I think that the folks here in this neighborhood should be more focused on that situation specifically. It's a massive development as opposed to basically a small residential uh, style business that's coming in here. That, that really has an ability uh, for parking um, and for limited hours of operation to use. Uh, I think it's something that uh, maybe there's a little bit of uh, concern.
Thank you. That is two minutes. You can also submit written testimony. Is there?
One, two, six D Street, Dr. Ron Romita.
Okay, please go ahead, sir.
Yes, I just want to say that I support the project. I think that's going to be great for the neighborhood. And I also think it's going to create jobs and also revenue up for the city. And I just want to say I support the project.
Thank you very much. Anyone not?
Yes, Jennifer Pink, five twenty-five East First. I'd like to point out three uh, things that I have concern. East First is like a Speedway and I've talked to um, Ed Flynn and other electeds on numerous occasions and I call the MBTA. It's, you take your life in your hands on East First. Secondly, the uh, walkway adjacent to the Edison plant is a hangout for people often who are up to no good as well as the industrial side of this street. It's very much a residential uh, street on this side, but people are hanging out. So there are going to be more people hanging out and there's an entrance into the uh, substation, which really leads me to my third point. Uh, which is that there's a, if, if you need a police officer to respond to something um, in this city, there aren't enough of them. There aren't enough people to respond to issues of loitering and um, pranks or mischief or what people are up to. And so having a bunch of stoners hanging out on the street who may be causing trouble and not having the assurance that there's anybody going to help take care of it is very troubling. And lastly, um, the north side of the street is um, not resident parking. And I'm concerned about the use of that side of the street by customers and by employees. It is uh, overnight, uh, but it's not during the day. And I think that that is another reason why I don't think this is, there hasn't been enough mitigation with respect to that. Um, I would also like to say that we, my wife and I are opposed. I would also like to say that we, my wife and I are opposed to the development of a pot shop on East First, and it doesn't go with the zoning as people have early stated.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who did not testify previously who wished it has to? Seeing no one, the board will take this matter under advisement. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Two-minute recess before we move to the final item. Thank you.
That's a very thoughtful question, and I think that's an important thing.
Thank you all. Moving on to item three. Calling Legal Greens LLC located at six ninety-three W Street, Dorchester. This is an application for recreational cannabis dispensary license with hours of operation from eleven A M. to eight P M. This is a certified equity applicant. The date of the initial application was March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. The date of filing with Inspection Services was June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. The date of the community meeting was September fourth, two thousand nineteen. The presentation team consists of Vanessa Jean Baptiste, Michael Maloney, and Mark Bouquet. This applicant has a buffer zone conflict, which it has submitted the requisite buffer zone statement. This matter was previously deferred by the B C B to allow the applicant, a certified equity applicant, to access technical assistance through the Office of Economic Development. They have since resubmitted application materials, which they will present today. Before we begin, I will note that Commissioner Smith has, again, refused himself from this matter as was previously disclosed. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Good afternoon.
A reminder, you will have ten minutes to present. Jasmine Nguyen, our project manager, will remind you at the five-minute mark and the eight-minute mark.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. I would first like to take this moment to thank the commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to present today. I would also like to thank technical assistants for providing us the aid that we needed to present to the board. You can go to the next slide. My name is Vanessa Jean Baptiste. I'm the C E O of Legal Greens. I hold majority ownership of fifty-one percent. My partners are Mark with forty percent and my other partner, Mike with nine percent. Mark and I will take, will run day-to-day operations in Uplands Corners location. Mike is a criminal justice attorney that holds clinics for individuals that are affected by the war on drugs. And our other partner, our other person is Kurt, who will run our diversity program and our impact plan within Legal Greens. This is just a rundown of what we have accomplished. What our supporters are, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we got that in September of two thousand twenty. Uplands Corner supports us at December twenty. And then we have a hundred and fifty supporters that are locally residents in the Dorchester and Uplands Corner. And like was mentioned before, we had appeared in the Boston Cannabis Board on October of two thousand twenty, and this is our second hearing.
Next slide.
Perfect. So this, my name is Kurt Foster. Thank you for this opportunity. We're going a little bit deeper into our diversity and inclusion plan. As you will see, we are committed to hiring diverse group of employees, suppliers, and contractors that reflect the demographics in the city of Boston. Looking this over, you will see we have four different goals for our diversity and inclusion plan. Goal number one, we want to recruit and retain diverse employees at all levels. We want a total headcount of twelve employees, and our employees will reflect the demographics of Dorchester. Goal number two, we will recruit and retain diverse suppliers and contractors, being seventy-five percent of those suppliers used for our establishment will be minority owned. Goal number three, provide a dedicated shelf space for local minority and women-owned businesses. And also, goal number four, provide technical assistant workshops for minority individuals and startup businesses facing barriers to the cannabis industry and in partnership with the Innovation Lab. Mind going to the next slide, please? So this is our diversity and inclusion plan continued. You will see we did break it up into monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, and annual goal. But once again, our number one goal, or one of our biggest goals, K P I's, is review the list of contractors and suppliers to ensure that seventy-five percent of suppliers are of minor, are minority owned. Next slide, please. This goes into our appointment plan. We are committed to hiring diverse group of candidates and provide them with competitive wages and benefits. We will specifically target women and young adults who are looking for flexible work schedules. We have four different goals with this. Goal number one, twelve employees, we want a hundred percent of our employees will be residents of Boston. Goal number two, sixty-six percent of employees will be minorities with at least five, with at least five of them being women. Goal number three, provide competitive wages with benefits and advancement opportunities. And goal number four, twenty-five percent of our employees will be individuals with criminal records. And obviously, these are very lofty goals, and we know automatically the only way we're going to be able to accomplish these goals is by developing and cultivating our relationships with partner communities, community organizations, and nonprofits in the area.
All right, next slide. All right, so community outreach. We are committed to our community through hiring local residents and training the next generation of entrepreneurs in our community to succeed in the cannabis industry. So this slide demonstrates a few examples of outreaches we've done. The first picture shows a business workshop flyer we completed with the city of Brockton, which we intend to do in Uplands Corner as well. The picture, the small picture up top shows Vanessa, who has sat on panels to discuss a number of issues within the cannabis industry in Massachusetts, such as issues with the host community agreement, transparency within municipalities, and so on and so forth. The third flyer shows EON, which stands for Equitable Opportunities Now, which is a minority-run platform that exists that educate and advocate for people of color to be economically empowered in the Massachusetts legal cannabis industry. We were featured on their careers and opportunity session. This fourth flyer shows it's currently on our social media pages, and it states that we're looking to hire women, minorities, people with criminal records, and we intend to do the same for the Uplands Corner community.
Five-minute warning.
Employment plan continued. We plan on achieving our employment goals by having competitive benefits and proactive recruiting plans. We plan on starting our managers with eighteen dollars an hour with progressive wages of up to twenty. We also plan on doing that, having bartenders and receptionists start at fifteen and progressive wages up to eighteen. Additional benefits include health insurance, vision, and dental. Every six months, we will conduct, we will conduct employee performance reviews and identify opportunities to promote staff. We plan on posting available positions on Metro Bay State Banner. We will also host an attend job fair and work closely with the Uplands Corner community to continue to partner with different organizations like we've done with EON to recruit employees. With having previous relationships with the Boston Pre Release Program, we plan to work with them to recruit individuals with criminal records. Our goal is to make some positive changes in their lives. Next slide. This next slide shows the location as is now and what we are proposing to do at six ninety-three Dudley Street. It was my family-owned business, and we plan to beautify the neighborhood by making the necessary renovations just to make it look nice.
Next slide. The next slide talks about our buffer zone. So we are five hundred feet away from private and public schools. The two pictures on the side show that we are within two existing cannabis companies. However, they are not open. Both companies are located in two different neighborhoods. One is located in the Roxbury neighborhood, and the other one is in the New Market, in the New Market Industrial Neighborhood. We are proposing our location to be the first minority woman-owned company that is in the Uplands Corner. If you could go to the next slide, please.
So the building security is very important to our success, and we plan to have onsite personnel, which is a minority-owned company named S P A Secured, Secured Protection Agency. And we plan on having them there to control the crowd. For our building security, we plan on having adequate lighting in the areas where there's going to be access to customers or deliveries. For inside security, we plan on having panic buttons at each registers, at the reception areas, and at the manager's office. We plan on having about twenty-four cameras that has twenty-four-hour backup, battery backups, just in case if something goes down.
Two-minute warning.
Plan is we'll be installing our security system in order to gain access, so protecting the youth and access, protecting the youth from accessing the product. In order to gain access into our facility, you have to show your I D. About three times. As soon as you get in, you'll ring the bell. The receptionist will see your I D. You have to put it on the camera. Then when they buzz you in, you have to show them the I D. They scan it. And then when they go to the bartender, they have to use their I D. Again, in order to purchase the product. So that's it on security. Next slide.
So then this is our transportation plan. We are, we have great access to the MBTA and the commuter rail, both the fifteen and the forty-one stops at our stops on the Dudley Street. And then we have the Fairmark commuter rail, which stops directly across the street from our location. Contingent upon the host agreement, we plan to, we plan to apply for Public Works, which will give us six private, six private parking spots on our location. And then if you go to the next slide, there's also two free parking lots that are not too close from our location. And then could you go to the next slide, please? This is going to talk about the money. So monies are being conducted by Plymouth Armor Group. The times are going to be randomized, and only managers will be interacting with the couriers. And managers will be notified fifteen minutes beforehand. The bags will be provided by Security Bank, and every time the money is picked up through our location, it will be dropped off to, dropped off at Century Bank the same day. If you could go to the next slide, please, which talks about our product. Products will only be delivered by cultivators and manufacturers. The times again will be randomized. Only managers and inventory personnel will be interacting with the couriers. And again, they'll be notified fifteen minutes. And if there's any issues, the managers or the inventory personnel will contact the, the licensee to notify them of any issues. Next slide, please. Any questions?
Thank you. And before we turn to questions, I just want to say thank you to Midori from the Office of, Midori Marikawa from the Office of Economic Development, who provided technical assistance, and I know worked very closely with this applicant. So thank you, Midori, for all of your hard work on this. Chairwoman, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thanks, Leslie. And yes, I just want to say it's nice to see the applicant back before us today. The application is much improved, and I'm glad you were able to avail yourself of the technical assistance that the city offers. So when you were previously before us, and Vanessa might have touched upon this, it was some concerns about the curb cut. Is that what you said you'd be working on with Public Works for the parking spots? Okay. And then have you continued to have conversations with the community since you've been reworking the application?
Yes, that's how we obtained our Uplands Corner letter of support. We, we reached out to them after, like, we had a meeting with them after the meeting with you guys.
Great, okay. And then I, I'm sorry?
We also presented at D S N I, also just to put that out there.
Okay. Yep, we'd like to see that. And I see in the, in the revised application that Theory Wellness is providing one hundred thousand dollars, no interest loan, and potentially two hundred fifty thousand dollars of product placement. Can you explain for our sake what your relationship is with Theory Wellness, or what their relationship is going to be with the cannabis establishment?
All right, so Theory, sorry, Theory Wellness, Theory Wellness. I actually, so went back, it was like probably a couple of years now, there was an article on Mass Life. I read it. My brother sent it to me. I read it. Theory was offering a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan to economic empowerment or social equity applicant. And they went through a process. They, I think they had about twenty people applying for it. We were one of them. And they chose us out of the twenty, right? So and our contract with them, which it says there's no strings attached, and it says that on the article as well. And Mike checked it, who's our attorney, and there's, there's no strings attached with them. It's literally a hundred thousand dollars. They gave us and they wired it to our bank account, and then a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we're about to open up, they will send product our way. So that's, that's the relationship with Theory. There's no ties to them. We don't have to continue getting product from them. Like, for example, right now, we're, we're in the process, we're about to get product in our Brockton location, and we can get product from whoever we want to, including them. So it's literally just a loan that we have to repay back.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yep, one he just alluded to. I was going to ask about his Brockton location. Has that, is that one up and running now?
It is not, but we, we are on the agenda tomorrow for final license, which means we'll be able to get product inside the store. Then they'll come in, do an inspection, and then they'll give us a date to open up. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll be open in Brockton.
Okay, awesome. And there was just one question in your security plan, and it says that you would revisit your need for security after sixty days. What does that mean?
And if, for example, we're having it for a crowd control because the, the building will be equipped with like panic buttons at all the registers. So if there's any incident, our employees are just going to press the panic button, and then the local police will come down. So the security, we don't, we don't want to get into issues with, you know, lawsuits with security companies touching people and stuff like that. So we want to just keep them straight for crowd control. And if, if it seems like we're not having that many customers come in where we need the crowd control, then we won't have a security onsite. But if we do, then we will.
So who's going to manage your queuing and check in your I D.s? And that's because that's typically what the security person does. So how are you going to do that?
The receptionist. When, as soon as they buzz them in, we have a waiting area. They'll have them wait at the waiting area. If there's customers inside of the showroom. if there's customers inside of the showroom, and just keep taking them in as, as they keep going in.
So you're not going to have anybody outside of your establishment checking IDs and queuing and doing any of that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because how we have our cameras set up, so once you ring the bell, you have to show your ID in order to get to the building.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambos, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't. Just, just a comment, and I'm really glad, again, to echo what Chairwoman Joyce said about availing of the TA assistance, it really shows. I just, I really appreciate the reflecting diversity in the neighborhood. I, I know those are really hard goals to reach, just and, and just want to, I guess, reiterate that the TA is still there for you, even if you are applying. And even after, I think that that, just want to make sure that you know that. So reaching these goals are just as important as having them, and so we want to be supportive of that.
Thank you. And they were definitely great. They definitely helped us understand, you know, the, the runs of our application before, so we definitely appreciate them for their help.
Excellent. It's really great for us to hear that, that our team is awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner St. Gian, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just, just one, I had, I had the same question as, as the chairwoman about Theory Wellness. And then also, Mark, did you say that this was a family-owned building?
Business. Yeah, that's, I operated it before closing it down to turn it, well, to try to turn it into a cannabis store.
But you know, oh, okay. And because I noticed there was also a landlord that was when ten, so when owns the building. But your business has been operating within it before. Okay, okay, that helps. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We are now going to turn to testimony, beginning with elected officials and their representatives.
I'm Adam, Chair members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, speaking on behalf of my colleague. ONS held a community meeting on February 22nd, 2021, oh, sorry, wrong one. Held a community meeting on September 4th, 2019. Residents of the area were supportive of the proposal, however, members of the Nonquit Street Land Trust voiced opposition, citing concerns about public safety. To date, ONS has received 201 letters of support for this proposal and two letters of opposition that have been submitted to the Boston Cannabis Board for this establishment. The opening of this establishment would be a vibrant addition to the existing and growing commercial district. While we understand that there are ongoing concerns from the abutting land trust, we would like to go on record in support of this application. We ask that the applicant continue to engage the community as they move forward in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives of elected officials who wish to testify? We will now turn to the general public. Your testimony will be limited to two minutes. Please keep in mind, be respectful of everyone's time, and do not repeat statements that were previously stated. You can also submit written testimony through Tuesday, the 16th, at 5:00 p.m. Calling Erica Moyes, please state your name for the record.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Erica Moyes. I am a resident of 1282 Boylston Street in the Fenway. I was born and raised in Boston. I am a graduate of the Boston Latin School and Boston College. And I am a former intern of Boston City Council President Stephen J. Murphy. I used to attend the Croc Center as part of my health and fitness, wellness and upkeep. And I'm familiar with La Familia when they were operating right there on Dudley Street. And I think Legal Greens would be an absolute great value add to the community. Their presentation was well thought out, and I fully support them, and I hope they go to the moon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling Joseph Thomas O'Brien, please state your name for the record. Calling James John, please state your address. Calling Bridget Sanders, please state your address. Calling Zulika Barrows, please state your address.
Hi, my address is 83 Hamilton Street.
Are you there?
Hello?
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Zulika Barrows in 83 Hamilton Street. I support Legal Green Business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling Madeline Andrews. Calling Jeremy Lowry.
I'm here. Sorry, Madeline Andrews. I am a resident at 31 Weston Street in Mattapan, and I just wanted to express my support for the Legal Green proposed business establishment at 693 Dudley Street. I think it would be really good, as I am actually a member of the community, a little bit further extended out of Dorchester, but the service that I do for the school department shows me that it would benefit, benefit the individuals living in that area based on the fact that it would be providing jobs. It's also going to be showing a positive example to young people, seeing other people like them as business owners in their community. It's going to potentially empower young women to become entrepreneurs themselves because as a school teacher, I see the options that are available. And right now, I feel like our kids don't think that something like this is potentially attainable for them. And having this establishment, Legal Green, would be a stepping stone in the right direction and a great example for the youth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Calling Jeremy Lowry, please state your address. Calling Nicely Georges, please state your address. Calling Erica Blaze, please state your address.
Hi, that's me again, and I support them one more time.
Edwin Laporte, please state your address. Calling I'm sorry, calling Esther Dorville, please state your address. Calling Elektra Joseph, please state your address. Calling Brenda Baptiste, please state your address.
Hi, sorry, my audio is kind of like in and out. I'm at 104 Moreland Street in, over in Roxbury. I'm very, I'm in high support of Legal Greens. They're great, coming from experience, I'm working them close, working with them closely. It's a great opportunity for the area, for the, not only just the area, but for the residents. And, you know, giving, it's all about, you know, these days, giving somebody who is missed out on a chance because of something on their background that is so small, giving them an opportunity, because, you know, everybody has families. Everybody needs a second chance in life. So I'm in great and high support of Vanessa and Mark Bouquet, and I'm Mr. Maloney, definitely, on my end.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any individuals who have not previously testified who wish to testify regarding this application?
Hi. Hi, my name is
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Sam Senna for Kevin Road, third floor. And I just wanted to say that I support Legal Greens. I suffer from depression as well as anxiety. So to have some place where I could just walk to, it's walking distance. I don't have a car, I'm not able to, you know, get to other places. So I definitely support them, and good luck with everything.
Thank you very much. Conrad Philip has, has his hand raised.
Hi, how you doing? I'm just letting you all know that I'm in full support of Legal Greens and their cannabis company over on Dudley Street. And I am extremely proud that you all will approve a black woman and being the first dispensary in Massachusetts. And FYI, $18 is plenty for us in this community over here. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please state your address for the record?
31 Tremlett Street, Dorchester.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals who wish to testify? All right, seeing no one, the board will take this matter under advisement. As a reminder, on all of the items that were heard by the board today, the record will remain open until Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. The board will reconvene on Wednesday at 1:00 p.m. to vote on these items. That hearing will be open to the general public, but testimony will not be accepted. Thank you, Chairwoman, thank you, commissioners, and everyone else who attended today.
Thank you for your time.